All right.
Okay, so let's get started. Bring this meeting of the Palo Alto Rail Committee to order. And if the clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Scharf. Chair Walbach. Three present.
Thank you, David. If we could have everyone's attention, thank you very much. So item number one is presentation on connecting Palo Alto. Oh, to any oral communications, ah. So this is oral communications on any item which is not on the agenda. So if anyone want to speak to an item on the agenda, put in your card for those items now, please. And this is for any items that are on the agenda, or sorry, are not on the agenda, oral communications. Nadia Nyack to be followed by Jason Matloff. You'll each have three minutes.
Great. Hi. So welcome to our new committee member, Lydia's not here yet, I guess. I just wanted to start off this new year by asking that we could have more of these meetings. Since you guys have decided that we're not going to have a community stakeholder group, then this really is the right body to have more in-depth discussions. The roundtable meetings are not, it's a kind of a hard format for people to really get into stuff. And so this is really the place to have more of those technical debates. When we had high-speed rail in town, we used to have meetings bi-weekly, sometimes weekly. So I think, given your aggressive timeline that's going to be discussed later, it seems like that would be appropriate. So I would encourage that and think about trying to figure out how to get maybe community presentations from different neighborhoods. Or if groups start to pop up with their concerns, this would be a good place to hear those. Second, I wanted to ask that, moving forward this year, we remember to have as a standing item on the agenda, a report back from the local policymaker working group attendees about what's happening on the Caltrain front. This is the Caltrain policymaker working group. For those who don't know, they meet once a month and they talk about issues on the peninsula that relate to the rail corridor. Having report backs officially every time on the agenda is important, so everyone stays abreast of what's happening. I also want to remind everyone that this committee made a commitment last year to have more dynamic meetings and to allow for further public comment. So when high-speed rail was in town, you guys would take public comment, city staff, you'd have a city staff presentation. You would take public comment, then the council members would debate and talk with staff. And then oftentimes, a lot of things were said, it could be 40 minutes long of discussion. And what we did, or what the committee did, was they would have public comment come back again so that members of the public, sometimes domain experts, would come and refute or correct some of the things that were said. And so I just want to remind you that that was one of the things that we talked about last year, and I hope that we remember to do that going forward. And lastly, I would ask, when we're doing the trenching and tunneling presentation, since the consultant that presented that report has, is not with us anymore, and we have a new consultant, if this committee could clarify what, if any of this work will be carried forward? Is the circulation study still going to be used? Are we to expect a hydrology paper? Or is this trench and tunnel paper that also includes hydrology, the new IT paper? I think we need clarification on those issues. And specifically, we need clarification on, we're having now a public community meeting about a trenching paper from a consultant that's not with us anymore. So will that consultant be there to still answer questions? Is city staff going to answer those questions? Will the new consultant that we take on board work directly with the Motte McDonald's old work? Or will they have to start anew? How is the community feedback going to be incorporated, and will that give new direction? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Second final public comment speaker, Jason Matloff.
No, I submitted a card, too. Item one, this is oral communications. Oral communications.
Did you want to speak to the first item on the agenda, or did you want to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
Oral communications, first item on the agenda after call to order. As far as I read the agenda.
They're enumerated, oral communications is outnumbered. Presentation on connecting Palo Alto, trenching and tunneling white paper is the first item. If you'd like to speak during oral communications, we can include you as well. So we'll hear from Jason Matloff first, and you'll be last. You'll have three minutes, thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who haven't met, which I think is only Greg. My name is Jason Matloff, I'm one of the members of the rapidly growing North Old Palo Alto Community Association that has come up with a specific proposal for grade separation in our neighborhood, specifically as it relates to the Churchill intersection. Just a quick comment, we have recently expanded to almost 75 homeowners that have signed on to our specific proposal. And what's important is we've gotten now almost a dozen that are in the South Gate area, which is a really important point because our two communities are starting to coalesce and collaborate on a specific proposal. And I want to briefly go over it because it gets to my comment. The proposal is, you know, we're huge supporters of trench and tunnel. If we can make trench and tunnel happen, and it can happen all the way through the city, through Churchill, we'd be wildly supportive of that. With a big but, if we can't figure out the financial way to support that, our proposal is to take a systems approach, okay? This discussion is largely dominated by discussions about individual intersections. And that's problematic specifically at Churchill because 400 yards away, we have Embarcadero. And we feel strongly that Embarcadero needs to be considered as part of the solution for Churchill. And the specific proposal, briefly, is that we close Churchill if we can't do the trench or tunnel. Close Churchill on the westbound side. Augment that with a pedestrian and bike underpass to support the huge amount of traffic of the kids and students going to Stanford and Palley High School. And then offset the lost traffic by augmenting Embarcadero, which everybody knows is a huge screaming opportunity, by doing multiple things, I think there's four or five different things. The first is expanding to four lanes in the westbound, in the eastbound direction, which would double the capacity of peak hours. Second is to take out the ridiculous third untimed light at Palley High School and replace it by a pedestrian underpass, so the kids have safe passage across the street to town and country. And then the fourth and fifth things are putting in timed, I'm sorry, protected signals on the east and westbound approach on Embarcadero going south to Alma. Because that's, you know, an on-ramp or an off-ramp from Embarcadero. So the reason why I wanted to speak today is because in our meetings that we've had with most of you, critically important, a part of this discussion is ROI. We, you know, the financial, finances of all this is the most difficult. The cost of pedestrian underpasses is critically important to the proposal because we're proposing two of those to augment traffic access. What was brought up in a couple of meetings is, I think, city staff or council members somehow had a perception that the cost of a pedestrian underpass, I think Adrian, you were one of the folks that, I think it came up in another discussion as well, but the cost of a pedestrian underpass was projected to be around $100 million, $85 to $100 million. So I went back and just did some research on the Homer one. That it was projected to be 2.3 million, it was over budget of 5.4 million. But even if it's 10 million today, it is a pittance relative to the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of other solutions. So this is a very important element of thinking about solutions that are cost-effective and have high return if we can't do the ultimate Nirvana of building a bored tunnel or trench throughout the whole city. So thank you very much, please consider that data.
Thank you very much, okay. And really, last two oral communication speakers, Richard Brand to be followed by Adina Levin. And if you do have speaker cards for item, enumerated items one or two on the agenda, please do get them in as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good morning, happy new year. Richard Brand, resident at 281 Addison. What I'd like to speak to, and we've talked about this last year, is the importance of these meetings. And I think Nadia hit that one pretty hard. But what really concerns me is it's been three months since we've had the last meeting. And this has been stated as the number one priority issue, higher than housing in the city because of the potential for all the issues that have been mentioned this morning, as we've all talked about. So I would just like to ask the committee to meet more often and air these things a better way. Planning, I was talking to Hillary about this. Planning Commission was going to discuss some of this, none of that has happened at the meeting. So I think there's a need to really air a lot more of this with the public because of the huge impact potentially that we're going to have in the city with this rail issue. Also, during the holidays, and there's been a lot of talk, I think personally, I think the chances of high-speed rail happening are getting slimmer all the time. I talked to a friend of mine who lives in the Coyote Valley. They are adamantly fighting the right-of-way intrusion into the Coyote Valley. So I think focus should be on what to do and how Caltrain is planning to change the right-of-way. And I second Nadia's point about we should have them come and talk to us frequently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last oral communication speaker is Adina Levin, you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, Adina Levin, friends of Caltrain. Something not relating to grade separations, this is actually related to the Dunbarton Corridor. And there was some information that came out last week about the East Bay side of the corridor, where there is a proposal on the table with the City of Union City and Alameda County Transportation, ACTC, Alameda County Transportation, whatever it is called, to utilize some of the money for Dunbarton Corridor Transit, their intermodal station and bike ped in order to complete a freeway segment between Mission Boulevard and 880. And so what that implies is that the funding that is included in RM3 that voters would vote for, as well as being requested in SB1, would be used to refill money over here that is coming out of that project over there on the East Bay side. The explanation being given is that this is something that had been mentioned back when Measure BB was being put together, when it looked like Dunbarton Corridor Transit was dead as a doornail. And this may have been a reasonable backup plan at that time. But given the significant progress, a lot of interest from Facebook, from SAM Trans, from a lot of the cities and jurisdictions, you know, that the project is moving forward, this seems like a much more puzzling decision right now. And I'll be happy to send a note to staff and rail committee members about that. Union City is looking to make their decision next week, and ACTC in early March.
In the interest of more public engagement and open discourse, I'm going to allow one last public speaker on oral communications, and then we do need to move on to item number one.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'm going to be extremely brief and essentially correct the record based on what the previous speaker said. The reason the Barton Rail flunked last time is because on the other side of the bay, there was this project, they have rerouted the ACE and the Capitol Corridor tracks to Union City and make connection to Bart at Union City. This is why the project created. We actually had full funding to do across the bay. This time, what we have decided to do is to split it in two phases, phase one and phase two. Phase one is going to be entirely focused on connecting Redwood City, actually Redwood Junction, to Newark. And the second phase is going to be this Bart, ACE and Capitol Corridor Shenanigans. The funding that Adina referred to is for phase two. In other words, there is no issue with going across the bay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to enumerated item number one, our agenda, presentation on connecting Palo Alto, trenching and tunneling white paper. Let's start with the staff presentation.
Very good. Chair, members of the committee, Ed Chikata, Assistant City Manager, also General Manager of the Utilities Department. I guess I drew the short straw this morning, I will do the walkthrough on the white paper that we have before you. It's actually perhaps more of a walkthrough than a presentation. It gives you something of a preview, both of the material that's in the white paper as well as, as you'll see, some of the upcoming public discussions. So let me proceed, and at the chair's discretion, certainly welcome any interruptions along the way to expand on anything that may be unclear. First off, just to provide a bit of context, oh, and I'm sorry, a couple of housekeeping items. First, did want to note for the record that Councilmember Koo did give us advance notice that she would not be able to make it this morning. So everyone's aware of that. We also do have a representative here from Motte McDonald, Derek Penrice, who's the Vice President and Deputy Practice Leader for the Tunnels Practice with Motte McDonald. So I will walk through the information. As was noted earlier, we do have a new request for proposal that is out to seek additional consulting assistance, so perhaps we'll get into that a little further later in the discussion. But that said, do want to provide a bit of context for this white paper, in particular with the calendar, that starts today and really extends over the next three months in a period of discussion of both this paper, as well as some additional or other grade separation ideas that have been received from the public through our roundtables and other engagement. The topic of the trench and tunnel, as committee members are well aware, receive much public interest. That interest has been largely in concept, because this is really the first opportunity to have a public discussion of some of the issues and implications of the, both the constructability, as well as the operational and other dimensions of a trench and tunnel through Palo Alto. Over the course of the next three months, we will be very active in having a number of public discussions, leading to opportunities for decision-making by the committee and by the council. In your second item on this morning's agenda, we'll get into more detail about the schedule for the Rail Committee and opportunities for the Rail Committee to take active role in that upcoming decision-making. Would note, as shown here on February 28th, just a week from today, we'll be having our inter-agency staff technical advisory committee meeting on this white paper. The approach, as the committee knows, that we've taken, the city's taken to the technical work ongoing, has been very transparent. And so as a result, while the white paper has been vetted among city staff and multi-departments, among city staff, it really had not until last week, or actually maybe a week slightly before that, been shared with other agencies. And so there is concurrent inter-agency review that's being done with the public outreach that we're having and starting today. So with that, there's always the potential for gaps in the analysis, certainly questions will arise. And we fully expect that to be part of the upcoming phase of the next several months. Just to hit quickly, some of the upcoming dates noted, March 6th, we've scheduled a community roundtable that will be at the Art Center, which starts at 6:30 PM. We have additional information on the transmittal memo for the, for the white paper itself. It will lead to some additional Rail Committee discussions in March. I'm showing tentative dates based upon the third Wednesday of the month that had been last year's standing date for the Rail Committee. I understand that the Rail Committee could discuss further whether those are the right dates, or may want to do any other changes. So in March, that would be preliminary review of the trench and tunnel in the context of other grade separation ideas. Again, I believe there are about 40 ideas that have been identified and organized to discrete concepts that could be discussed and will be presented here to the committee next month. Then in April, a further discussion of the concepts, also some feedback based on the public discussion. And we've put on here, and again, you discuss further in your second item, possible recommendation of early elimination of any specific rail grade separation ideas. Again, that's not compulsory, simply wanted to provide the option there should the committee at that point have decided that there's sufficient information and public feedback to perhaps scratch some things off the list that would allow us to focus on the remaining items. And then here in May, we're showing Rail Committee a recommendation of council approval of the alternatives for further evaluation, that would be a smaller list of options that would, again, lead us toward the decision-making by the end of the calendar year, toward a locally preferred alternative, and then getting into our environmental process. Okay, so with that, let me walk forward into the material on the trench tunnel white paper. Just a general overview, key elements of the white paper. Yes, please.
So I wanted to go back to the schedule. Our second item is we're going to talk in further depth about the schedule.
Correct.
Okay, so now's not the time then, because I have significant concerns that your schedule's not aggressive enough.
Okay, we will have more detail on that in second item on the agenda this morning. All right, just a quick overview, keying in on the major elements of the assumptions that are going into this white paper, the methodology that's been used to develop the analysis. And then jumping into the impacts and costs, we'll have more detail on each one of these elements. Key assumptions, particular note that the electrification project, Calmod, as Caltrain refers to it, is currently underway. There is ongoing construction in the northern section of the Caltrain route. And they're proceeding, and will proceeding and will soon be actively working, just in terms of finalizing design here in Palo Alto. So key assumption here is that by the time we are into construction on grade separations in Palo Alto, that the electrification will be an existing condition. That has a number of implications that I'll describe in more detail. Second, that there is no passing track, so that effectively the right-of-way, the two tracks will remain, the width required through Palo Alto. Third, that major roadways will remain operational. This is an important assumption that Mott McDonald made in the analysis, and not unlike a typical major public works project, that for example, Embarcadero Road, which currently goes under Caltrain, will remain operational through construction. So as a design and construction constraint, a trench or tunnel would need to go under that existing alignment, wouldn't be able to eliminate University or Embarcadero during the construction period, given that that's expected to span several years. And finally, we'll talk about the shoe fly, temporary railroad tracks that will be required in order to keep Caltrain and freight line operational during the construction of a trench or tunnel. Terms of the methodology, primary goal used for the development and the evaluation of the options is described improved traffic. Now, traffic can bring connotations, so we'd want to clarify that this includes vehicular as well as bicycle and pedestrian traffic, and access effectively within Palo Alto that would be improved by the construction of grade separations. Traffic, again, pedestrian, vehicular, bicycles, that currently needs to negotiate past at-grade crossings. The criteria, some of the geometric criteria related to maintaining the railroad operational, being important elements into the criterion constraints, as well as shown here, the clearance between rail operational right-of-way, the electrification in particular, ultimately leading to profiles that are used and displayed for evaluating options. This, I know, is not readable. There is a table like this in the white paper itself that shows some of the distances between the major crossings, as well as based upon the grade slopes required, what some of the implications would be for grade separations at these locations. Again, ultimately leading to development of options, and this is sort of the cross-section known as a profile for the engineers that shows the depth, with the black line being basically the existing ground level, the yellow or orange dotted line being the bottom of a trench, the profile showing the depth of a trench. If you look at it on the left, it's the north end of town, and on the right, the south end of town. Let's see, the first marker there shown is the San Francisco Creek. Over on the left, where you see that Option 1, and over on the right, San Antonio Road, existing overpass, again, on the south end of town. You have a vertical scale there in feet that basically demonstrates that the trench, in some cases, will be as deep as 60 to 70 feet down below existing grade in order to clear the major vertical constraints, whether there be existing underpasses, the creek, multiple creeks, and then come back up at a grade that is either 1% as the Caltrain design standard would require, or 2% where necessary in order to minimize the length of trench and the depth. Here's, again, the term shoe fly, not a commonly known one, but one I think that we'll be very accustomed to as we talk about the trench and the implications of a trench. This is what's called a cross-section. So as though you were looking north along Alma Street, at any given point, the width between the rail right-of-way and Alma varies some, but in general, this is basically the layout. Again, if you could take a slice down, sort of your X-ray vision down into the ground, showing, looking toward the north, the existing railroad right-of-way, the existing rail lines, railroad tracks, and then over to the right, the center line, the center of Alma Street, with the curb on the west side, the curb on the east side, and the right-of-way line on the east side of Alma Street. Shoe fly really being necessary to relocate temporarily the existing railroad from its current, its existing location over to the east in order to allow the Caltrain and freight lines to remain operational during the excavation and construction of the trench. For those who are here, when we had the presentation from the Executive Director of the Alameda Corridor East project in San Gabriel Valley, he talked about the shoe fly construction and showed some pictures of how that occurs. Here, we're showing the overhead catenary system that will be required and involved with the electrification project that's, again, underway. Notable here that currently we've got along the right-of-way between the existing railroad and Alma, quite a bit of landscaping and shrubbery, which would largely need to be removed in order to allow for the installation, the placement of the shoe fly line. And again, that right-of-way would need to be cleared in order to maintain clearance both for the trains, as well as the overhead electrical system, as well as the equipment necessary in order to excavate the trench and the depth required. On the right-of-way on the west side, notably, most, many locations along this rail line is residential to the west of this right-of-way line, so we would be constructing immediately adjacent to what are currently backyard fences. We've got some more detail on the trench further in. Yep.
Before you go on, just to clarify, so to the left would be, this cross-section would be neighborhoods like Ventura and Southgate, et cetera.
Correct, yes.
Green Park, and then on the right would be neighborhoods like Old Palo Alto and kind of the southwest edge of Midtown, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. I just saw some eyes in the audience that looked like they wanted that clarification.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, perhaps a little more visual on the concept of the trench and some of the implications. The photo to the left is an actual photo from the Alameda Corridor project in Los Angeles, not Louisiana, for anyone who might be confused. This shows the overhead beams that are used to shore the walls, effectively necessary in order to keep the walls stable and ensure that there's not any caving in, effectively, of trench, given the depth that would be necessary. The Alameda Corridor, not a great parallel, given that it's a much larger facility, a number of multiple tracks with its width, but nonetheless, the concept still applies. Again, Alameda Corridor East, Executive Director showed us that in the case of San Gabriel, where they built a trench similar to that, rather than do these overhead beams, they used tiebacks, tie rods that go underground between the retaining wall to adjacent properties. So in that case, I think, believe he said it was about 30, 30-plus-foot tie rods that are steel rods that are anchored into the soil adjacent to the trench. Again, to be clear, in our case, where this is west, we would likely require easements, subsurface easements, in order to place those tie rods under existing residences and backyards, effectively, to the west of the Caltrain Corridor. One more photo, again, this is of the Alameda Corridor project, showing the overhead beams in order to maintain the retaining walls. This is looking north from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach in the, well, you can't see it here, behind us, in the far distant, you see the downtown of Los Angeles. Okay, just to quickly review some of the issues associated with the construction of open trench. One, noted the right-of-way impacts for the shoe fly, in our case largely affecting Alma Street, and the, during the period of construction, necessity of taking at least half of Alma Street for this five-plus-year period of construction. Alma itself would then need to be reconfigured in order to maximize its circulation function during that construction period, but clearly lower capacity than it's currently provided. There would be a requirement for relocation of existing utilities, whether they be electrical lines, sewer, storm drain, gas lines at crossings. We already talked about some of the limitations of the transportation crossings in the creeks that would really drive some of the design, the depth necessary for the trench. And obviously with construction, there would be noise and vibration that would need to be evaluated and addressed through construction. Would note that an open trench, as described here, among the options, and perhaps, you know, when you're talking in the hundreds of billions, millions or billions, notable that this is the least costly among the citywide options, and that there is the potential with trenching of the right-of-way for additional transportation crossings to be added where they don't currently exist.
If you could just clarify, I thought the white paper said the least expensive of the citywide option was a tunnel boring, whereas in the southern part, the southern trench would be an open trench. That's the way I read the white paper. I thought the white paper was pretty clear that an open trench throughout the whole city was not cost-effective, and was not even possible, really, that it would have to be a tunnel bore.
So I think that's relative to the cut and cover, I'm sorry, the covered trench? Yes. So I'll jump forward to that.
I misread it.
And again, this is order magnitude between $2 billion and $4 billion, so within that order magnitude. Okay, so this is the most expensive option here, which is the covered version of the cut-and-cover trench. Would note that in this case, there are operational issues that would need to be addressed. Let me come back to that. Note that in the case of a covered trench, again, I'll do this really quickly, that same right-of-way impacts, utility relocations, there would be necessity in addition down below of ventilation facilities, and this is the most expensive. In addition to ventilation, there are the emergency service, emergency response dimensions that would need to be factored into both the design as well as the operational training for our police and fire first responders in order to be able to make access should it be necessary in that covered section. Terms of the opportunities, covered trench does provide more opportunities for use of the cover, and again, both for open space and recreational uses. It's the only difference from the prior alternative. Terms of bored tunnels, shown here, the tunnel boring machine that would be used to construct facility like this. Jumping quickly to the section that would be typical of a bored tunnel, this would require, for the purpose of the analysis here, assumed twin circular 30-foot diameter, excavating tunnel boring machines with potential for open trench portals as necessary for the either end to bring at grade, as well as the necessity of placing portals around the stations. Terms of impacts, right-of-way impacts, really focusing on the entrance, exits, as well as the stations in order to construct, there is the necessity of protecting utilities in place where that could be accomplished, but also relocating where necessary at crossings. Again, similar noise, vibration impacts to be addressed, and ventilation, as well as public safety, emergency access. Councilmember Sharpe's point, this one is more economical than the covered trench configuration, again, with similar potential for use in the areas where their excavation is done lower. Again, though, in the context of multi-billion dollar expenditures.
Right, and just so to put them in order of cost, of the three, citywide, according to this report, the least expensive of the three that we've discussed would be an open trench, secondly would be bored tunnel, and then the most expensive would be the covered trench.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, we've got slide 20, so we'll come back to that. Okay, so a quick recap of some of the issues that are common among the approach, the construction methods necessary for both trenches and the bored tunnel options. The right-of-way impacts already discussed, necessity of staging, having staging areas for the equipment needed in both situations. Construction truck routes haven't spoken to yet, but recognizing the excavation that would be involved with either of these options would require significant earthwork movement, and the necessity of that to be accommodated throughout the construction process. Utility relocation spoken to, as well as surface traffic impacts really haven't gotten into, would need to be addressed as a part of the construction analysis, other than above and beyond what was discussed for Alma Street itself. We'll come back to this if further detail desired. Okay, let's speak for a moment to the electrification. Spoke briefly to it earlier. Once again, noted as an existing condition for the purpose of this analysis, currently ongoing. Really hit most of these points, perhaps other than the last item, that the parallel station would also be necessary, again, for a temporary construction situation. If we're constructing the citywide trench, we would similarly need to have temporarily relocated stations, say at University and Cal Ave during the duration of the construction period. One note, since groundwater is a frequent topic of discussion here in Palo Alto, to note the profiles that would be required for the trench excavation in comparison to our current understanding of the depth of the groundwater table, that at a few points here noted at University Avenue, the trench would be at a depth of roughly 60-foot below existing grade versus roughly 32-foot, where we know the existing groundwater table, to be Churchill 55-foot versus 25, so about 30 feet down below the groundwater table. Oregon 40 feet below the groundwater table, and Charleston 50 feet below the groundwater table. So in all cases, there will be waterproofing and pumping systems that would be necessary in order to ensure both groundwater not intrude into the tunnels or trench, and recognizing ongoing issues we've had at Oregon Expressway, that this would need to be an issue of particular attention through the design and construction process, and ultimately operationally as well. Okay, so back to the costs, again, back to Councilmember Sharpe's point. Order of magnitude is worth, I think, walking through briefly. The open trench option, as was described, the least costly of the citywide options, from $2.4 to $2.9 billion, again, order of magnitude, really for the purpose of comparison. Estimate, cut and cover, where there, again, would be the potential for use above the trench with backfill, the most expensive option of $3.3 to $4.0 billion, and the bored tunnel at $2.8 to $3.4 billion. Really haven't spoken to the South Palo Alto options, so let me briefly note those here. There are variations on the open trench options that would only focus on trenching in South Palo Alto, south of Oregon Expressway, really, and two variations there. One under West Meadow and Charleston, again, both of them assuming a 2% grade that would be acceptable to Caltrain, that Meadow and Charleston option at $750 million to $1 billion, and open trench under Charleston only at $500 to $700 million. As a point of reference, Mott McDonald did provide the latest estimate for the VTA BART tunnel, again, just as a point of comparison, that that tunnel, roughly five miles, bored tunnel with three underground stations at $4.7 billion. So order of magnitude, I think this, we're in the same ballpark. Okay, so to quickly recap some of the staff conclusions based on our evaluation of the white paper, as noted in the white paper itself, that from an engineering perspective, you know, in some ways... you know, in some ways, everything is possible, and, and all options are technically feasible from that engineering perspective, can be constructed. There are a number of implications associated with that feasibility. First, that this exception from the 1% design standard is, is really essential and will be part of our ongoing discussion with Caltrain. Second, that significant issues with all of these options, including the construction impacts, would include that the citywide options are dependent on cooperation from our adjacent cities, which will, again, be a point of ongoing discussion, not only with those adjacent cities, but with Caltrain and other responsible agencies, including Santa Clara Valley Water District, since there are a number of flood and groundwater table management issues involved, and that ongoing costs, such as the security pumping ventilation, will require funding. And our understanding, based on preliminary discussions, that that would largely fall to the City of Palo Alto, given that this would be unique treatments in comparison to other elements of the Caltrain corridor. Our conclusion is that the citywide options are likely cost prohibitive, based on what we've seen and the financing paper that has been, financing work that has been complete to date, however, that the limited subservice options of trenching in South Palo Alto may warrant further analysis. So with that, that concludes the walkthrough. The, again, as noted at the beginning of the briefing, this is kicking off a number of public and agency reviews and discussions. Look forward to the committee's feedback and your feedback for us as we enter into those additional discussions leading into upcoming rail committee discussions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Before we go to public comment, let me turn to my colleagues. You were both on this committee last year, and I'd like to hear your thoughts about how we should proceed with incorporating public input into these meetings.
All right, I, I would say that I think that Nadia is correct, that I know it takes longer, but I think it's really important to get the public comment. I think that we should go ahead and hear from the public now, and then allow the public to speak after we speak.
We didn't do that last year. We certainly have a lot of experts in the audience on different issues, and that's helpful. We also have experts in staff. I, I guess I'm willing to try having public speakers after an item, again, as respondents, but I don't want it to become antagonistic between the public and staff, if that makes sense.
Okay, and I'd also hope that it doesn't become antagonistic between members of the public who may have differing views. I hope that we'll all be very respectful of each other. Of course, we do want to encourage everybody to feel comfortable speaking. Before we do go to the public--
But we do need to have some time limits.
Yes, and, and we will definitely have, have time limits. Before we go to the public for initial public input on this item, I, I do also want to allow colleagues, if you have any additional, just clarifying questions, similar to those you know we were asking during the presentation, I think it'd be helpful for all if, if you want to throw out clarifying questions right now, but if you don't have any, we can go straight to the, the public. Okay, great. So we have several public speakers, we have actually five, so everybody will have two minutes for this one. And again, there will be an opportunity for, for further comments and follow-ups later. So the first public speaker is Stephen Rosenblum, to be followed by Roland Lebrun. Stephen?
Good morning. My name's Steve Rosenblum. I live at 212 Sanderita in Palo Alto. I've read the city manager's transmittal letter and the attached Hatchmont-McDonald report on the tunneling-trenching option, and I find myself very upset by the analysis assumptions contained. The discussion of this important issue is what arises from a broken process where real community input was not provided. In the two roundtable meetings I've attended, the most public support for any grade separation option was for the tunneling-trenching option. People wanted to know what it would look like and what it would cost. Mr. Keen informs us that the cost is prohibitive. Isn't that a decision for the people of Palo Alto and the city council to make? Why was it assumed that creek levels are sacrosanct when they are in fact concrete culverts? All grade separation operations require a shoe-fly track, so it makes no sense to single this out as a tunneling-trenching issue. Besides, I'm not convinced that if the tunnel were bored 50 feet below the surface, that trains could not continue to run on the existing surface tracks, only requiring shoe-fly tracks at the spoil haulout locations. There's no mention of the most almost negligible amount of property takings associated with tunneling versus trenching, tunneling-trenching versus above-ground separations. The possibility that a covered trench or bored tunnel would create valuable real estate in Palo Alto that is transit-oriented was only mentioned in a cursory fashion, with no estimate made as to the money this real estate could generate. Looking at large cities, very often, big structures are built on top of tunnels, and a four-mile-long, 100-foot-wide corridor creates 12.1 acres of new land, conservatively worth $240 million. This is a source of revenue completely neglected in this report. Sources of financing for this project were not included. How can we discuss such a project without even a cursory discussion of where the money might come from?
Thank you. And our next public speaker, Roland Lebrun, followed by Nadia Nyack, and Herb Borak will be after Nadia.
Thank you. So the first question is, will the tag meeting on 28th be open to the public? The second is, why was there no consideration of putting one shoe-fly either side of the trench versus both shoe-flies to one side, and potentially reduce the impacts on, on the side? It's very common in Europe, I can give you multiple examples. The slide on the cut-and-cover didn't show a middle wall between the tracks, this required fire safety and ventilation. Electrification impacts, in the electrification EIR, I ask Caltrain to consider bimode trains, the hybrids, and basically what allows these trains to do is to go through a construction zone without electrification. They just got diesel power packs, and that's how they get today. So in closing, as you can tell there, the real issue with, with tunneling is the cost of the stations. So what I did last night, and I'm sorry I didn't do it earlier, is to forward you my comments for basic, for the High-Speed Rail Authority, for the SEIR, for the Peninsula, and the recommendation there is to consider hybrid solution, whereby the trains that don't stop at a station blast right through a tunnel, and the only trains that use the existing tracks are the trains that stop at the station. If you do that, the only surface impacts will be ventilation shafts, since it's, actually it's an eight-mile tunnel from just north of Mountain View to just south of Atherton, and they are two miles apart, so you have to decide where, where they go. And then you can actually design the tunnel so that later, when funding becomes available, you can actually start constructing underground platforms for potential underground stations. At that point, you may be able to get rid of the, the surface tracks. Thank you.
Thank you. And just wanted to make sure everybody knew that there were, I think there are a couple extra seats, if anyone needs one.
So--
Nadia, and to be followed by Herb Borak.
Thank you to the committee members for considering the extra time. If we might think about adding a timer up here, so everyone knows how much time they have, just because this is going to go on for a while, that would be great. Okay, so we have no mention of a trench starting just after Embarcadero, going under Churchill and popping up at Cal Ave. I would say that that's something that we need to understand whether that's possible. There's also no mention if there's no freight on the corridor. There's still an ongoing live discussion about Dunbarton Rail. If we have no freight on the corridor, that gives you a lot more flexibility in grade design. That's been something we've discussed for years. I'm kind of confused about why that wasn't included in the scope of the work that was done. I've just sent you additional information about the 2% grade and why I think that this is a no-brainer. We've talked about it for years. I sent you a letter this morning, which is signed by Mayor Licardo and Mayor Ed Lee, that shows that they have pushed for this. I actually also sent you in 2010, High-Speed Rail accidentally studied 2% grade in an alternatives analysis, so we have their work to show that this is possible. So this is a bogus number, and, and it's clearly something that we should continue to push for. Vertical clearances, one of the major assumptions here is how quickly we can get up or down based on where the creeks are. You have two assumptions. One is that you need 24.5, 24 feet, 5 inches of top of rail. That is a CPUC requirement. BART and MetroLink have gotten exceptions to this rule. There's no reason that we can't ask for an exception. And so using that as a hard rule, and not having analyzed or even considered how that would have changed things, I think was kind of irresponsible, honestly. Second is that the water district requires eight feet of clearance for unlined creeks, five feet for lined creeks. So besides San Francisco, it's our understanding that the rest of the creeks in Palo Alto are actually lined creeks, so we don't need such a big clearance underneath. That greatly changes how quickly we can go up and down. Assumptions for electrification, they use center poles instead of using what's called a gateway. That takes up a lot more space. Also, they kept all of the shrubbery along the road. That has to get taken out anyway. I will try to fit my other ones in, hopefully, on the next round. I will also try to write this down, because I talk fast, and there's a lot of stuff here. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll go to Herb Borak, to be followed by Richard Brand.
Chair Welbach and committee members, the, the study presentation presented by Mr. Chikada listed a number of key assumptions. To me, the most important assumption is the recently adopted Palo Alto Comprehensive Plan, which is to continue and increase Palo Alto as a regional employment center, and to provide additional housing along transportation corridors, presumably so people can live here and go work someplace else. So the main motivation for grade separations is the fact that the land developers and companies who want to create a regional, a more intensive regional employment center in Palo Alto, need a way to get their employees to and from work. They can do it by having them live someplace else and commute on, on rail, that would need more trains, and therefore rationale for grade separations, or they need to be, you know, living in Palo Alto and crossing the tracks and needing grade separations. So there is a clear linkage between any kind of study and the comprehensive plans, assumptions and policies on employment and housing. Ultimately, you come, I come to the conclusion that if you start that way, that those are the people who should be paying for any grade separations, rather than the population as a whole. Instead, what we have is some people thinking, well, if only their neighborhood would get the grade separation it wants, they're willing to align with the development community and help them get this project going through. But I think if they notice what's happened in the community in the past, whether it's a single development or a larger one, that's a mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on this item, Richard Brand, to be followed by Tony Carrasco.
Thank you. Just an observation regarding the temporary shoe-fly along Alma, and, and I know shoe-fly, it, it don't bother me. Anyway, I, I think that, sorry, a little levity here. This is a temporary diversion while the, the rail is being rebuilt. There's no need for electrification of that, because this is during construction, the rest of the line is going to be intermittent electric and not. Caltrain should be able to keep diesels running even on the, the temporary diversion while construction is going on. They'll have a lot of diesels left over, so I think this is a, a false assumption that we'll need to build cantenary wires along Alma for temporary construction. Thank you.
Tony Carrasco, to be followed by our final speaker on this item at this point, and that's Adina Levin.
Tony Carrasco, 583 Grand Book Drive in Palo Alto. One of the embedded problems that show up in this report is that Caltrain is going to operate during, after they electrified, at 10 trains per hour, which means it's gridlock in Palo Alto. It's a disconnected Palo Alto for as long as it takes us to build this, these separations. That fact should be highlighted and explained to the public, because it's going to come back and bite us if, if people don't know that there's gridlock for three years, three or more years. Second point, I think this report sort of merges some of high-speed rail criteria into the Caltrain, what Caltrain can do for grade separations in the tunnel and covered trench. Thirdly, I think it's probably the most important point, when we as architects try to develop or, or solve a problem, we need a budget. If we are trying to do a $1,000 project with a $10 budget, it just doesn't work. We need to find a different solution. I would really encourage and ask you guys to tell us what that budget is for Palo Alto. Is it half a billion dollars? Is it a billion dollars? And then we can go find, find a way. Fourthly, I'd like you guys, given our budget issues and probably not being able to get to 4 billion, I suggest that we look at other options like wire ducts that will keep Palo Alto connected, but not cost so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Last speaker for now is Adina Levin.
Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain context from this comment is that Friends of Caltrain supports getting the Caltrain corridor grade separated as soon as practical, and we do not have any positions on the designs of grade separations in local cities, which are a local decision. Given this, I have a question about the schedule, and then also a question about the design The papers that came out late last year included a paper about the funding and financing options, including some of the options that do make a trench or tunnel throughout the city look like a huge stretch, but a trench in South Palo Alto could conceivably be done depending on the will of the voters of the city with various different options. So I'm wondering where in the process would those funding and financing options be discussed? And one of those, those included bonds on property taxes and also value capture from real estate development, which would, of course, need to be a discussion in the city about whether that was something that the city wanted to do, and so I'm wondering where in the schedule that would wind up being discussed. And the other comment is with regard to the design options, without a price tag and based on earlier policies, the designs that were discussed did not include the split designs that are being contemplated in Menlo Park and have been chosen in Burlingame and in other locations. And given the price tags, I'm wondering if that might be something that the city would be willing to assess again, to be able to assess the trade-offs in terms of visual impacts and cost. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, this should be quick. Turn to colleagues, questions or comments? Great.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. I know it's a really important topic. And I want to thank staff for putting together the white paper. I actually thought it was, it was well done, especially the, the transmittal letter by the city manager. People see, when they go into these roundtables we've had and the community outrage, I've heard a lot of frustration, frankly, that there's been too much on the table, frankly, and, and we haven't really got into discussions of, of the hard issues. And I think we're really starting that discussion now. Some of my big concerns are really with the schedule in some ways, so, and they play into what this is. When I read this report, it's fairly clear to me that we need to at least be really clear to narrow the, the options. And I think we should narrow those options even starting today. I mean, when I read this report, what was it? The, where'd you, I want to get this right, so. When you look at the 2.4 billion to 2.9 billion for an open trench, that's the most economical of the three citywide, three citywide ones we have. So we're clearly not going to do the cut-and-cover tunnel, city limit to city limit, at 3.3 to 3.4 billion. We should make that decision now and spend no time on it whatsoever. That, to me, seems to be a no-brainer. And we should, and we should give it, basically tell people at the next-- And we should, and we should give it, basically tell people at the next round table that, look, that doesn't make any sense. And I think the same with the twin deep bore tunnels. So that leads the open trench city limit to city limit at 2.4 billion to 2.9 billion. I also personally believe that makes no sense and that we're never going to do that and it's a waste of time to consider it. You know, I would be willing to make those decisions today. But at the very least, I think we should say, we're not going to do the cut and cover and we're not going to do the twin deep bore tunnel. I think what we need to do is we need to set up the meeting from March, it's March 6, correct?
Correct.
With some direction, we're only the council committee, so the council hasn't made a decision, but we need to tell the community where we're going with this, where we think, and set it up. I do think what this tells me is that we do need to spend some time with the community talking about the open trench under West Meadow in Charleston at a 2% grade and the open trench under Charleston only at a 2% grade. I mean, those seem to be viable options possibly, I'm not saying they're viable, but they worth, they merit further study. And that means that the community's then got to understand what Alma's going to look like, how long it's going to take, what this disruption's going to be. Are those things better than if we just do? How many houses might be taken with the open trench under trench? Are there no houses that are taken with the open under trench? I think we need to start focusing on those kind of issues. And by saying nothing's off the table and by leaving what I view to be completely pie in the sky concepts out there, I think we distract from the real work that needs to get done. So I actually at some point will make a motion that we at least get rid of two of these, and if I had support, I would get rid of the three citywide ones and suggest that we don't do that. Now, I realize we'd have to go to the city council for full debate, and I think that's a good thing, but I do think we need to start moving things forward. What else did I want to say about this? I did want to comment a little bit on the Churchill thing. I actually wanted to say I really appreciate the hard work that that community group has done, and in my view, I completely agree with everything they say, and they have my full support for that on that at this point. Now, that's not to mean that there may not be other, other approaches that look, that are on the margins. I also want to say that staff says there's 40 different options roughly we could do. What I think we should be doing as soon as possible is looking at those 40 different options and focusing people on, on them and the impacts of each of the option and weighing the pros and the cons. And I, I fear that this notion of a citywide trench or tunnel is distracting from the real work that needs to get done. So that's my plea to everyone is let's, let's move forward and realize that we're not going to be spending $2.4 billion because it's not going to happen.
Adrian?
Thank you. So again, thank you everyone for coming on. Thanks to staff for the white paper and presentation. Quick question, what is staff actually asking us to do? It just says, begin public discussion of the white paper and its findings.
Really no action required, so we simply wanted to set this up for you to have the first opportunity to both get a briefing on the paper as well as really get your feedback on how we proceed from here.
Okay.
Can I just jump in real quick on that? Could you link just for, very quickly, our schedule with Adrian's question with what Greg just mentioned also about, when are we moving from 40 down? Because I think the March schedule really brings us to answering your question, which is getting input now, but it's driving towards
Yes, that's correct. So effectively, again, here we are on February 21st in a month. After these two meetings as well as any others that might be helpful to reach a conclusion, we'll be presenting the other alternatives, the other 40 concepts and staff's evaluation of that on March 21st in April. We've set this up
So Ed, let me just stop you right there. How do we present 40 concepts in one meeting? I mean, I, I don't understand that. I mean, that's my concern with this. It seems to me that we need to have a bunch of meetings to go through these other concepts, unless these concepts are not really worth presenting.
We've set this up, and Josh can expand as you see fit, into a matrix of basic themes, a number of variations, and gone through using the criteria that the council previously approved. To your point, it is a lot of information to digest, so staff is working on how best to communicate that in a way that is understandable and provides enough information to, to make these decisions.
So Jim, thank you for that and bringing us to the schedule. I guess that is kind of where my question was going, is what schedule do we have? What decision points do we have? And what evidence do we have to support either narrowing the solution space or exploring new opportunities? I agree with Greg that I do think we are at the point where we should be narrowing things. My underlying question though is something a number of public speakers brought up. Are we using the correct or at least agreed upon assumptions? And I'm not sure we quite have that here yet. I have a list of 10 or 12 questions about those assumptions, and to me, you know, I can't really package them up in one way, which kind of leads me to think maybe we don't have all the assumptions totally right and we haven't fleshed them out for our public in order to remove some options. And I think we have to be really, really diligent about that.
If I might, I know that Josh has been keeping notes along the way. If there were value in going through individuals, I think a number of them, maybe relatively small differences and ultimately have, I'll venture out a statement here, no impact on the conclusions.
Okay. So that, that kind of statement's actually really helpful, right? If we do have assumptions and we're not sure which way it will go, A or B, but they have no impact on our outcomes here, that's great to know, and that's the kind of stuff we actually need to document. So just a couple of them that I have written down. These are each quite big, but if they're not so big, then we should know that. So is it the 1% or 2% grade? Do we have four, do we have passing tracks for high-speed rail? Can we divert the freight above or via Dembarton? The creek clearance is eight feet, is the five feet? Nadia mentioned the CPUC requirement of the height. Are we using catenaries on the side or in the middle? Are the roads remaining operational? I actually had not even thought of that one before, and it's crazy, but we might actually close Alma for five years, right? And then one other question, a few more assumptions. One, Councilmember Scharf mentioned, you know, this number of 4 billion is crazy. Is it? I agree with you, in my gut, it's crazy.
Yes, if you recall, if you recall, we had the financing options. If we proposed every tax that the staff could possibly come up with, we couldn't pay for it.
Right. But some people have brought up the idea of value capture on top, which we haven't totally, and I know that's a complex issue in itself, but I don't think we have the ability to take things off the table unless we've done the due diligence of proving why they should come off the table, is what I'm getting at.
Could I add just quickly on this note? I think that part of the discussion in March when we get here and we look at these alternatives, we'd be in a position to give you another look at the funding and financing options in a way I think starts to put in perspective what would be required and what extent you feel, okay, you can make that decision recommendation as a council or is in there some way we've ultimately got to test that with the community. I'll be honest with you, I've looked at the numbers, I've already drawn some of my conclusions. I apologize for that. I'm not an engineer. I am somebody who's been dealing with public acceptance of difficult financing projects, and the scale is quite significant. I don't think we can ignore that. But we'd be in a position to present that in a more, I don't want to say digestible, in a, to, in a more informed choice-making way in March when you start to consider these alternatives, to be able to factor in some of the potential funding requirements.
Right. Yeah, so funding's just one more of them though, right? And I think
Let me, let me give you just one way to think about it just right now so that we get real about this. Basically, if we were to bond $4 billion at the sort of current rate that the city's able to bond in no order to leverage X amount of dollars for X amount of bonds over a 30-year period, $4 billion could cost us $267 million a year that we'd have to finance. That is 20% more than the entire city's general fund budget each year for the next 30 years. So when we start to look at how that would be distributed across sectors, you start, you start to see, I mean, there is a big every-year scale.
All right. And then just three specific questions, I guess. One is, is there a separate hydro paper or is this supposed to be that?
The hydrology discussion is included in this paper. If you wanted us to expand on that, we certainly could.
I'm not, I'm agnostic about whether it should be in this paper or another one. I think it's just doing the due diligence so that community members are satisfied, which gets to kind of my final point. I was talking to somebody the other day about managing big projects, and they brought up the idea of like a red team, right? Some team that's running counterpoint or perpendicular and challenging the organization. And I think that's what I've been getting at here, is we have a whole bunch of folks who are well-informed and are questioning these assumptions, and we want them answered. And I'm wondering if my colleagues would be interested in some kind of informal group, whether it's made up of staff, community members, doesn't have to be a stakeholder group, that is able to submit challenges to the organizational inertia and reporting and work that we're doing, and then we would require ourselves to kind of respond to that. Because I think we're always going to have people poking holes in this process. And if we have a system where we're at least able to respond to that and say, yes, we hear you, you know, that assumption was chosen because of this, but as you mentioned, it has no impact on the final outcome, I think that's helpful. But I'm not convinced we're doing a good enough job in terms of documenting those different places where people are trying to poke holes. So that's, that's an idea I just wanted to float. Do we have some kind of oppositional team looking at this process? That's where I'll leave it for now. There are a couple of things that seem very obvious in the room right now, but I'm not sure are. The North Old Palo Alto proposals, I'm at this point inclined towards, but I've also heard from at least one resident of South Gate that not all of South Gate is necessarily of the same mind. And that I've just heard from Nadia, that's, that's true. So it's hard for me to say today that we're fully behind, as a whole community, as a whole city, behind one solution around Churchill. I'm hesitant to say we can't do the deep bore tunnels today. I'm much more comfortable saying we can't do the, and we're not interested in the cut and cover trench, because I don't see a lot of advantages of cut and cover over the deep bore tunnels, and it's more expensive. So it seems like the worst option in a lot of ways, unless I'm missing something. I'm not enthusiastic about the price tag on the deep bore. I think that the deep bore really comes down to value capture. It really comes down to is there a value capture proposal that doesn't mean an insane amount of office development to pay for it? I don't think there is, but I could be wrong. And it's hard for me to say today that I'm sure I'm not wrong. I'm sure we can't afford that, that amount of development to help pay for it. I'm inclined to say, yeah, let's rule it out, as, as Greg was suggesting, but I, I feel it's a little premature to do that. I wasn't on the committee last year. I wasn't here for your full discussion about the financing white paper at your meeting on the 29th of November, so you may feel more comfortable with that. I don't feel comfortable with that today personally, and I think a lot of people in the community aren't comfortable with that yet. I think that the meeting next month would be a good time for this committee to rule some things out. In saying today, we think we're probably going to rule these things out unless somebody brings us a really darn good reason why we should, we shouldn't, and then basically give people notice, if you think deep bore can be paid for, if you think it's achievable, you have one month to bring us the case, whether that's staff or members of the community, the red team, Adrian talked about, whatever. And basically say, you know, before we rule it out next month, you know, because it's, it's on the chopping block, but you could get a reprieve, but you've got a month to make the case. And I'd feel more comfortable with that, and I think people in the community need that opportunity. You know, I was, yeah, I think that we need, we need a chance to, as a community, you know, consider our, our dream options really thoroughly, and I think that this meeting would be a premature time to rule some of those out. I don't think that the cut and cover trench is a dream scenario for most people, and so, you know, saying that we recommend, or that we recommend strongly that we rule that one out, I'd be okay with. As a process question, I don't know how many times we need to send recommendations to the council, so I'm also okay with just saying that what we do now is prepare for that, that March meeting and say, you know, kind of rank how we feel about these, that the cut and cover trench is an F and the deep bore tunnel is a D. And, you know, and then the, the, you know, the regular trench is a C minus if it's citywide, but a half-city trench or a deep bore tunnel for South Palo Alto, for Charleston and Dormetto, we might say that's, you know, we're, we're very intrigued by that as a partial city solution. So that's kind of where I'm at on, on process. On split design, having the train go a little bit up and the roads go a little bit down, especially in the South Palo Alto area, does staff want to weigh in on that at all?
That is one of the 40 ideas that we've assembled based on the feedback we've gotten from the public to date.
Okay. And so we'll be discussing that next month. Okay.
Yes.
And one of the questions that was raised by, during the public comment, while, if we were to pursue for a portion of the city or the entirety of the city, but if we were to pursue deep bore tunnels, is it possible for trains to continuously run above that? Or do we have to do a shoe fly during deep boring? Basically, if you do deep bore, do you need to close part or all of Alma simultaneously? It seems like there's some disagreement about that, so I just wanted to turn to staff with that question.
Shoe flies would likely be required for the short sections where the tunnel boring machines would enter the tunnel, but trains could continue to run above the excavation site of the tunnel.
I'm not sure I understand.
So at the two entry points of the tunnel, there would need to be bypass tracks constructed.
So there'd be portions of Alma that might have to be partially closed?
Yes. Short, very short segments in order to bypass the entry points for the tunnel boring machines.
Okay.
And then get back onto the alignment.
Right. So I'll be honest, that's a good reason why deep boring, even if it's just for a portion of the, of the track in Palo Alto, you know, that, that's a point in its favor. It doesn't mean that we're making our decision, but, you know, I think that the disruption of circulation during construction, especially if we're talking about a multi-year project for construction, which it might be, is something worth noting.
And just Just one point of clarification. There could be locations along the corridor where we could possibly, you know, build the, the entry points in some other piece of property and avoid a shoe fly altogether. But our right-of-way is fairly constrained, so I don't know that, you know, we haven't looked at whether there's opportunities, specific opportunities for that.
Well, I think that looking at that would be a priority, so when it comes times for, time for motions, I actually think we should include that. Given that, you know, a tunnel or trench, or, you know, given that a tunnel might be an option for, actually, would that apply for a trench as well? No, that wouldn't, that would just be for the deep bore tunnels, sorry. Yeah, so.
Perhaps just for the council's, or committee's consideration, as an order of magnitude, we are still talking about several block section at, at a minimum. And while noting right-of-way or property elsewhere, if it were, say, on Alma or on El Camino, again, it would require the same kind of traffic diversion around the construction area, much less if it were private property, would require full acquisition of the private property and, and again, potentially providing future development opportunities, but do, do want to ensure that the concept is grounded in some scale, because these are pretty significant right-of-way, uh, real estate projects.
Got it. One thing that I, I wasn't in our staff report and I should have brought it, printed out, brought it with me, and I, I think maybe we should include in future staff reports, is our guiding principles, right? So we can continually refer back to them. I don't know if it's possible to find those and pull them up and put them on the overheads.
I don't believe we went to council with guiding, with any changes
I thought we, council approved them.
No?
No?
Oh, oh, that was a difference.
The evaluation.
It was a reevaluate.
Yeah, yeah. So So if staff is able to pull them up, I'd love to, to have those up on the screen so we can think about them. I, I think they overlap a lot with our guiding principles that we adopted by just thinking about, you know, what's important to me in considering these options. Safety, obviously, you know, during construction and also the long-term safety, right? The effect of safety, that, and that includes making sure that pedestrians don't have access to the trains or in a tunnel or trench. The resulting circulation, right? What is, what is traffic circulation for all modes, for bikes, pedestrians and cars? What What does circulation look like after we're all done? What are the noise and aesthetic impacts after we're all done? What are the construction impacts and circulation impacts during the construction phase? And, you know, how much private property we're talking about taking? Are we talking about a couple of easements, maybe taking a couple feet off a couple people's yards, or are we talking about, you know, actually taking a large number of homes and, you know, through a minute domain? So that's another, another thing that we wanna keep in mind. I, I think all of these have been acknowledged, I think most of them are in the guiding principles, and so we get them up, we can compare and contrast, but those are the things that I'm, I'm thinking about. So, you know, I'll, I'll come back to, well, if we're gonna have public comment again, and if we're gonna have motions, should we, what do you think, colleagues, should we do motions first, or, or, yeah, public comments first and then go to motions? I think that's, I think that's right. So let's go back to Greg, if you had other thoughts or questions.
Yeah, I did have a couple of thoughts. I, I think Chair Walback, you, you stimulated some thoughts in my head about what do we need as a committee? You know, you mentioned, and I think Councilmember Fine mentioned the same thing, the value capture notion. You know, a couple of things went through my head. I'm convinced that there's, that the value capture doesn't work. I'm convinced for.
And I think you're probably right.
And I'm convinced for, for, you know, based on a number of personal experience, I, I give you some sense of what I think. I, I say to myself, you can't sell the value capture right up front, you know. When, when we go through a process of approval of any major, major development project in Palo Alto that would create any significant value, you have huge opposition. You know, I, I could just remind people of the Ariaga project, which they were gonna spend sixty or seventy million dollars in a community benefit to build a theater, the same thing with the Jay Paul project, when they were gonna pay for the entire public safety building, which at this point looks like a hundred million dollar value capture issue. I don't really see how you convince anybody to pay for that until you have the approvals in place, until you have a clear development agreement that would say, you get to build X, you couldn't sell it, there would no value be created. In Palo Alto, a process to get there is a really long process, and I'm not even clear where you'd put it. And, so I, I just see the whole value capture thing as something that we wouldn't know for four or five years where the community is, and you'd be adding the whole thing together. So I just don't see it ever happening. I see, if you wanna go down the rabbit hole of value capture, you're actually gonna say, we might as well delay this project, you know, five, six years beyond that while we work out what a development agreement would look like that, at which point, the value that we create, other people have spent the measure B money by the time we create the value. So I, I just don't see it as a, as something that we can do as a community that makes any, that makes any real sense in, in terms of how you would fit this into the process. And I'm fine if we wanna hold off and, and do that, but I do think it's really important, and I'm glad you said, that, you know, these are issues that are on the chopping block. And I don't, that's really what I was trying to get to, is the exact same point that you made. I don't want us to go to the roundtable and people get lost in the details of the trench, the, you know, the, the trench, what do we have? The trench, the deep bore tunnel, and then the covered trench. And I don't want them to spend all their time arguing about, you know, if we go fifty feet, can we go under the creek, or we can do that, because in reality, it doesn't matter. As, as, as Ed said, or Jim said, I don't remember, a lot, we don't wanna have discussions where the outcome, where we might, they might be right on a technical point, but it doesn't matter because the outcome's the same. That's a waste of a community meeting. What I want the community to be debating is this, is, okay, let's look at the South Palo Alto trench. Are we better off with a South Palo Alto trench? I mean, are we gonna close Alma on that? Are we gonna take any homes? As opposed to an up or a down, what do we call, what do we call the up-down? I don't have a good word for. So the hybrid, as opposed to a hybrid solution which maybe takes, you know, X number of homes, but there's no impact on Alma, or there's a limited impact, or there's a shorter impact. That's the kind of discussion the community wants to hear, and that's what they wanna know. So Josh, how does that fit into the schedule that you're putting together? I mean, how do you take those forty, those forty things that we have, break them up? Yeah, break them up between different grade crossings, and have those discussions where you can see the pros and cons, and the community can then talk about that, and we can get input from people who live there and are gonna be affected by it?
So we've organized the forty ideas into locations, and then kind of themes, and then we've gone ahead and done an initial screening of the forty ideas where we've vetted them against these tier-one and tier-two evaluation criteria that was adopted by council in 2017. And I think we could bring you the initial scoring that we've developed, and then we could have a conversation about whether the scoring makes sense, whether it reflects the community values, whether we need to, you know, look at weighting potentially, and what we'll get out of that is, you know, a short list of the, the highest performing ideas for each of the locations.
And then we're gonna go have community meetings where we get input based on those with the pros and the cons.
Yeah, I think we'd want to, you know, present some initial scoring based against those criteria, and then have the community, you know, give us input on, you know, whether that scoring does indeed reflect the community values and, and, you know, the wants and needs of Palo Alto residents.
You know, can, can I just jump in?
Sure.
So I think we'll maybe talk about this also a little bit more in the schedule part of the, the next item, is that correct? I don't think we should lose sight of the fact of the general direction we're working under from the council now, right, which is to look at being able to make a preferred alternative selection by the end of this calendar year, which then presumes, working back, that we would move from forty to four to eight options, say, by June. Now, I, I'll just tell you this, and this will be really funny when we talk about it in the future, like how I oversimplified this. It doesn't seem that difficult to me, working through and looking at it with the staff, to move from forty to ultimately four to eight. And I also think our community as a whole, not necessarily the most engaged, most knowledgeable members of our community, but our community as a whole, will never be able to focus at all on forty options. So even to get the four to eight starts to put into contrast what the range of the choices are that we have, and I don't think we should lose sight of getting to your point earlier about, you know, are we gonna keep picking at issues that don't have a measurable ultimate impact? We've gotta be able to somehow be prepared to get to four to eight. And, and I would suggest along the way that, maybe later we talk about process, red teams, some of my own ideas, talking with some of our citizens about, you know, how we can be actively engaged with the most engaged stakeholders in parallel, but what the roles and responsibilities of all of the parties have to be in that process, because if we are, if we're, if we are, I don't wanna say endlessly editing versus co-creating a solution, we won't be able to get to be, to ever to make choices in the time, anything close to the timeframes we're looking at.
So Jim, when you say four to eight solutions, we have four grade crossings. Are we talking, I mean, if we're talking four solutions, four grade crossings, it's not too hard. I mean, are we talking per grade crossing? What are we thinking here?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think you jump in there on that.
It's a mix, you know, some of the ideas pertain to just one crossing location, others include two or more.
No, but in terms of narrowing it down, when Jim says get to four to eight by June, we have four grade crossings, what are you thinking?
It could be, you know, one could be a, a solution that addresses two adjacent grade crossings, you know, a couple will be single-location grade crossings.
Would it be like one suggestion, or would it be two suggestions for?
We're leaving that open, so we've, we've scoped it four to eight is what we have the ability to do detailed analysis on, so we could end up with just one.
Here, here's what, to answer your question, so it's, it's obviously we're not four to eight for each of the locations, and so we're at suddenly sixteen or whatever.
Let's bring it back, it's three hundred thousand dollars, right, scoping roughly.
Right.
Per, so that's a lot of money.
So I, I think our general thinking is you could look at a pattern that would have four to eight options for the whole corridor. I mean, so, and one of them may have two, two, one may have all, whatever it is, you know, we may make recommendations to staff, the community have some different ideas, ultimately your, your job will be to say, what is, what are the four to eight that make the most sense, that meet the criteria that we want for decisions? And we go back to Adrian's really good point about, do we have the right assumptions? I think that's really good to get that clear, or clear enough. Not perfectly clear, because if it's perfectly clear, we will never get to them in, in Palo Alto. But we also need to equally focus on the, being clear about the decision criteria we will apply, because that will be variable also, and we'll have to make some choices there.
And what are we doing with the Alma crossing? I don't hear anything about it. Are we gonna have assumptions, or we're leaving it, or we, or we have great separation ideas for that, or is, do, do we have that?
Yeah, the, the forty ideas include all four grade crossing locations.
So, just.
And some, some.
Just briefly, what are we thinking about for Alma? Is there any discussion of it?
You know, there's some pretty creative concepts that were developed at the community roundtables that we'll be presenting, but, you know, we're also including traditional options like the hybrid, Palo Alto Avenue, AKA Alma Street.
Is, we should probably get the name included, how should I refer to it?
It is technically Palo Alto Avenue.
So I should call it the Palo Alto Avenue Crossing?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, there's a, a hybrid that's been suggested there, which would continue the Menlo Park, what they're tending to lean toward right now across the creek, and then we, you know, depress Palo Alto Avenue slightly, and then come down before the station. There's also some other creative solutions that were suggested by the community that would increase the roadway connectivity between Alma and El Camino, and potentially close the Palo Alto Avenue Crossing. There's also some suggestions to connect some of the street network that leads into Menlo Park, which would provide an alternative. All of these will be presented as, you know, parts of the forty ideas that we'll bring to you.
Shouldn't we break these up to the extent that we can by crossing? I mean, and that, and not to discount what Jason said, I mean, when I say break them up by crossing, break them up by crossing, and the areas surrounding with the different, like Churchill and, and Barcadero, or, you know, the Alma Crossing, and El Camino improvements and that, but it seems to have one meeting where we're really talking about distinct, doesn't make a lot of sense to me, frankly.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I guess, I, I sort of think that the patterns will start to merge with the presentation, and, again, famous last words, but I, I would think that would start to get somewhat clear along what you're proposing, by just really being able to look at the, the array and the patterns. I mean, it sounds really complicated, even forty, and in some ways, if we actually have a range of criteria we're somehow committed to trying to apply, I do think it allows you to get down to four to eight.
And with each of them, when we get there, right, we're gonna discuss what the construction impacts are, and also how many properties we take, and what we estimate the cost to be for each of them, that kind of stuff. Okay.
I want to just jump in for a, a couple of things. I know we are going a little bit far afield, and, but some of these discussions, I, I think it's important to have at this first meeting of the year, and it, it kind of bleeds between the two agenda items. I think one of the important lines in the staff report for this item, was in the first big paragraph at the bottom of page one of the staff report that said, this review will, the public review will undoubtedly raise questions and identify gaps. So I, I do think even though not everything obviously was studied in this white paper, and there are, you know, a lot of assumptions, and people will take issue with some of the things in this white paper, and have taken issue with some of the things in this white paper, I appreciate that staff said, we know that's gonna happen, and that's why it's good to put something out there, because if nothing else, it spurs the conversation, right? It's good to, you, you put out a starting discussion point, and then that inspires response, reaction. I am intrigued by, you know, the idea of a red team, or just people to play devil's advocate. I, I've always been a fan of that, you know, you wanna make sure that if you're gonna move forward with something that's important, that you've thought about why you might be wrong. And having people who are focusing on poking holes, if nothing else but to improve our understanding and our commitment to our, our preferred scenario, I, I do think is important. One thing that this did not cover, and maybe staff and my colleagues who were on the committee last year can help remind me about this, one thing this did not talk about was the opposite direction, instead of tunneling and trenching, viaducts and berms. You know, in, staff, I don't know if you can get back to the, the criteria, you know, it looks like, yeah, the ones I was thinking about were, I was remembering most of the criteria, and I, I think I forgot to mention, of course, the environmental impact and the cost, obviously, that we've been talking so much about. My understanding, the noise and the visual impacts, the lasting noise and visual impacts of a elevated solution, a berm or viaduct, are, you know, the two biggest knocks against them. And I'm wondering if, looking at cost and looking at the ability to have more connectivity beneath a berm or a viaduct, if that changes at all how we think about those, whether that's in any of the considerations that we'll be taking up next month, or if they've not been considered at all, and they were already ruled out, so help me out with, with the history on that.
So historically, the city's adopted policy position has been non-supportive of elevated solutions. However, during the community engagement last year, you know, viaducts and berms were put on the table at some of the roundtables by the public, so the list of forty ideas does include some elevated options.
Okay.
But there are some potential noise and visually, visual aesthetic issues with, with those solutions.
Yeah, and I wanna be clear, I'm not advocating for those, I'm, I'm just, you know, as we're looking at this year, and again, this goes into the item two, and we'll pick it up more there, I, I just wanna have an understanding of how we're gonna be putting things on the table, brainstorming, and then filtering, and cutting down, critiquing, and getting more and more to a, a narrow set of options, but just making sure that, you know, either they've been ruled out for a reason, or we have the opportunity to rule them out, but have a conversation in an efficient way, we don't wanna just drag on brainstorming all year. And city manager?
If I just might add, I think that, I, I think we need to refocus on the, the role of the rail committee, which is in the lead in this time, right now, and how we discuss this. And so I've heard from some of our friends in the community that, you know, some concern about, are we, are we dismissing the viaduct option, for example, because it was part of a, of an earlier generation's sort of criteria, and when we were really open to looking at lots of different options. So I think it's completely also within the purview of the committee, that as we bring back options, if you say, regardless of whatever preceded us, you know, you want us to dive deeper on a particular option such as that, I think, I think you should clearly assume that that's what you'll do, and we'll be ready to respond to the, the committee in that regard.
Adrian? And then we'll, I think, we'll be ready to go back to the returning commu-, returning to the public, and then come back for any motions before we move on to the next item?
So, yeah, I just wanna remind us all what we're here today doing, and in my view, if we think about a telescope, today we are just talking about this trenching and tunneling white paper, we are offering counterpoints, questions, ideas, that fits within the larger process of our connecting Palo Alto project, which we've been working on for two years now, and I'm a little worried that up here, we're beginning to speak a bit more about solutions than process. I would encourage us not to prejudge any of these options, I think of us more as arbiters, actually, on this issue of the rail grade separations, that we have agreed upon a process where we're evaluating different things and trying to come to some agreed preferred alternative by the end of this year. I think that's legitimate, but I worry that we're doing a bit of prejudging on specific grade crossings here today. So let's, if we can, just stick to the white paper. I, I'm kind of intrigued by staff, you mentioned a score, you were planning to do some scoring, and so I guess what you'll be doing is taking some of these reports and the financial white paper and the circulation study, and scoring the different alternatives, is that roughly correct?
We'll be using the tier-one and tier-two criteria that's shown up here, that was adopted last year, and then we'll be, you know, using the data and the analysis from the white papers, as well as, we're gonna be getting feedback from the TAC as well, that's one of the, the goals.
Okay. Do we have, like, running lists of feedback on these white papers and on community issues, whether it's the assumptions, or will, will the TAC also look at this and say, you know, reconsider these assumptions, and will we respond to those?
We have a database of all the public comments that we received last year and, and this year, and we, you know, are crafting responses to ones that, you know, have questions that need to be addressed, and then, you know, I think the TAC will have some considerable comments on this paper, and will transmit those to the rail committee after the TAC meeting.
Okay, so just to build a body of evidence, I think would be helpful if we do group Okay, so just to build a body of evidence, I think would be helpful if we do group, categorize and then publish our responses to those public comments and the comments from the TAC and some of the issues we've brought up here today. You know, I mentioned a list of them earlier. I don't expect answers today, but I think it's important for us to keep those in mind.
All right.
Perhaps on that point, I think for the record, just it would be worth noting at this point that among the number of assumptions that were raised on the 1% versus 2%, the clearance, the clearance under the channels, clearance for the catenary wires, I think that as a generalization, I think I would say that the white paper assumes the most aggressive and therefore the most well, the most aggressive approach to all of those issues. So leading to the lowest cost effectively, a lowest cost estimate of what the relative alternatives would be. Again, recognizing these are all order of magnitude, whether it's five feet versus eight feet under a channel, really would not change the conclusions, but as it happens, the assumption was five feet.
And does that include the assumption about the future of freight on the corridor or what we could do with with grading if freight was no longer an issue on the corridor?
So again, for the purpose of the analysis here and either Josh or Motte may want to correct me that the assumption is that we would get 2% where we needed 2%. There's not an assumption of the elimination of freight on the route. Leave it at that.
Right, because you said it's the most aggressive. I'd say the most aggressive would be we find a way to convince freight to no longer run because right now it's only running because the operator wants to maintain the rights, but they're not actually making it, they're not using it for many utility reasons.
So freight operations would not change the conclusions of the white paper because we you know, we assumed 2%, which is a very large variance from the 1% standard that Caltrain currently requires. No city along the peninsula has gotten a variance to that degree to date. There's been you know, 0.25% variance is granted in the case of San Bruno.
Well, my question.
And then sorry, and then and as far as tunneling, you know, Caltrain and other passenger railroads typically, even when they're electrified, use diesel equipment to do maintenance. So the ventilation would still need to be in place for diesel equipment, even if diesel freight trains were not utilizing those tunnels.
I wonder if that'll be true in 10 years. And just to be clear with if you have a if you have a passenger only, can you go steeper than 2%? My understanding was yes, and that's why I asked the question about this study, you know, is it the most aggressive? Because the most aggressive wouldn't be a variance similar to the variances we've had before, which are still in the context of a shared passenger and freight corridor. The most aggressive possibility to consider would be a passenger only corridor and the grades which are possible in that scenario.
We can go back and take a look at that and respond to that.
Okay, and I'm not saying we're going to get that, but if you have mayors from other cities at least talking about 2%, you have you know, is it Union Pacific, right, has the rights, but they only run enough trains to keep the rights, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to convince them eventually over the next 10 years to pull back on that. There might be a way to buy them out, there might be an opportunity. It would be complex, I'm not saying it would be easy and I'm not saying we should assume we would do it, but I think it's hard to say at this point, we can assume we won't be able to do that. But if I'm wrong, I hope in the next month or two, we'll I'll find that out. Okay, let's go.
Just a quick point, isn't there an RFP that's going out and we should know by April where that RFP is on terms of the freight with with Caltrain? And so we should have a at least, we should have some sense of, I don't think we're going to have the sense of you know, what you're suggesting that there'll be no freight, but I think we'll have some sense on the 2% and that kind of stuff.
Well, if forgive me if I'm not interpreting your comments correctly, but what I'm getting from you is you'd like us to dig a little deeper on what type of grades could be possible if only passenger trains were running along the corridor, electrified passenger trains.
I'd be interested in that. We haven't put that in motion yet, but I'm certainly interested in that and we'll be we'll be looking at that and you know, this the parallel question is, what are the steps necessary? And is there is it even within the realm of reason, not the realm of technically feasible, is it within the political realm of reason to consider that in 10 years, freight may no longer be running on the Caltrain corridor? That's that's the second question.
Corey, I just wanted to maybe you could clarify, if we're planning on having a preferred alternative by the end of the year and you'll have no idea if freight will be running or not within 10 years, unless you think.
I wasn't suggesting that we wouldn't know for 10 years, I was suggesting that freight might not be running in 10 years, but we might know that.
We would know that this year, you think?
It's a question, right? I don't have the answer. I'm not saying, hey, we're not going to have freight in 10 years, so let's look at passenger only and make those our priorities. I'm saying I'd like to have better clarity about what the complexities are in phasing freight out of the corridor because that might enable steeper grades, which might substantially reduce the cost of a deep bore tunnel for a portion or entirety of the track.
So do you do staff know, I mean, there is that RFP going out for freight right now and they're supposed to have responses by, I'm not sure, but I thought it was March and I think they were supposed to have some sense by April of of where, but I mean, maybe you guys know.
Don't have specific information on that. Happy to follow up with Caltrain and for your next meeting, come back with more information.
Great, thank you. All right, so let's go back to the public. For this round, everybody will have three minutes, so I'm going to give people a little bit more time this time since this will be our last time going to the public on this item. Nadia Nyak, Monica Tan Brown, Roland Le Bruin and Yoriko Kishimoto.
Thank you.
And you don't have to use all of your three minutes.
So I just want to reiterate, we did not study a short trench under Churchill. It's not in there. So you're looking at only citywide trench or trenching in South Palo Alto, there's no real clarification about whether you can get down after Embarcadero, go under Churchill and come back up before Calav. I think that's very important. Second is, the goal here is not just to grade separate this corridor, the goal is the circulation of Palo Alto. I did not hear an answer to my question about whether the circulation study that Motte McDonald did is still in play and how are we considering what these alternatives do to circulation? We still don't understand what that does. Elizabeth spoke last minute about the flaws in the circulation model that make it make us unable to actually predict what happens if you happen to close Churchill. I think those are still really vital. Josh mentioned a database with comments. I think in the interest of transparency and in helping not having to keep beating the same horses, you know, to death, those comments should be made public. The answers to those comments or concerns should be made public. It will help us stop repeating the same thing over and over again. I just want to say the question that member Colback was talking about was or Woback, sorry, is related to Dunbarton Rail. It is vital that we understand what the orders of magnitude of difference in price would be. If if the Motte study showed or if any study showed that the cost of grade separations would be reduced by 50%, 75% if the freight went over Dunbarton Rail instead of coming through Palo Alto, what does that do? If it cuts the cost by that significantly, don't you think the city of Palo Alto would want to take a really strong position on Dunbarton Rail all of a sudden? If that changed all of the drivers? We're not looking at elevated mostly because the sound concerns that we had on a on a viaduct instead of a berm were that the city was related to noise of the freight because electrified Caltrain will be much quieter and putting freight on a on a viaduct would create a lot of sound carrying. If there's no more freight, that's an alternative that the community may decide they want to have back in because you have better connectivity between the neighborhoods instead of having the quote Berlin Wall effect, right? The assumptions and both the funding assumptions and the technical assumptions matter. This is like the whole thing that high speed rail did to us. They put in all sorts of assumptions that made all these criteria and all these possibilities impossible. The funding criteria, right now, the talk is all about how we'd have to look for all the money ourselves. Why? Measure B is our biggest source of funding and that is communal funding. And I would make the argument that we have 42 grade separations between San Francisco and San Jose. Why are we not politically unifying and having people going up to Sacramento and making noise about this? They did it back in the 20s when they were looking at grade seps. We used to do it with when we had PCC and we were looking at high speed rail grade separations. This should be a constant policy thing. I would encourage you guys to go to city council, try to get a letter and start going to meetings. We have lobbyists in Sacramento that should be working on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and we had our one more late card came in, that will be our last card for this item and that was a Dean 11. So next speaker, Monica, to be followed by Roland, Yoriko and Adina.
Hi, I'm Monica Tan Brown. I live at 111 Churchill. Everybody knows it by the red door and the little picket fence out front. So I didn't really prepare for today. The only thing that I want to say is, well, two things. One is that there are 96 families who are waiting with bated breath to know whether their homes are going to be taken. So I'm one of them and you can hear that I'm sort of upset, right? Rightly so, because I have two young children and I want to make sure that everything that you said, Councilman Scharf, is totally to point. Like, we need to narrow down the 40 items to four to eight items. We cannot continue with 40 items on the list. I want to know whether my house is going to be taken and I want to know now. Sorry, I know it sounds very selfish of me, but I do, I want to know now. Number two, I think there needs to be a little bit more public awareness around this. Even friends who live in the community, I have friends in Evergreen Park, they're like, I had no idea, I had no idea that this was happening. How can we support you? How can we help you? How can we be part of this concern in our neighborhoods? So I think that's another piece that is really concerning is that it still doesn't seem like the whole community. The people who are closest, maybe at the epicenter, are aware of what's going on, but everyone outside of that epicenter, they don't know what's going on. And this is about the community and connecting the community and making sure that we can get from point A to point B easily. So those are my two points and thank you.
Thank you. Roland, to be followed by Yoriko Kishimoto.
Thank you, and hopefully I got enough battery juice to show you something here. So on freight, I got bad news for you because if you look at the California State Rail Plan, you're going to have more freight going through the peninsula, no less. And quite frankly, if it doesn't go through the tracks, well, the only option is for the freight to go through Highway 101 and I don't think you want to go there. You're going to be hearing more from Caltrans about that in the future. On Churchill, about four years ago, Richard Hackman reached out to me and asked me to look at this and the main focus there, to actually look at all four of them separately, but in the same document. And the main focus there was zero property takes and Richard asked me, how could you do this? So I actually spent three weeks on this. It's a 16-page document and it's about four pages on each grade separation. I'll be happy to forward it to you for your consideration. It actually, from what I heard Josh saying and some of the comments during the meetings, I think a lot of the same ideas were there. And I think one of the problems you've got with costs is these figures have been deliberately inflated to basically kill the double bore tunnel. So if I can show this to you, this is 2001 in London, okay? And it actually shows the four tunnel contracts, the station box which is quarter of a mile long. And the first tunnel contract is 4.7 miles twin bore for $265 million. Then the station box 210 is quarter of a mile long, your station would be half that length for 210. Next one, three miles, $27 million and next one, 3.3 miles, 210. So that's $1 billion for 12 miles of tunnels through London, including a station box. So I'll be sending that to you and I've also got more, this is nearly 20 years old. We awarded the tunnel contracts for High Speed 2 last summer and I'm working on that and actually going to give you some video simulation of what these tunnels would like in distance. On funding, I think you're overlooking the fact that the High Speed Rail Authority, number one, has got the mandate of connecting San Jose, San Francisco in 30 minutes and any capacity. If you come up with a solution that will help them achieve those objectives, you potentially got half a billion dollars coming from them. So I want you to think about that. On the question that you had in how much room do you need, you need the minimum of 80 foot of ride of way, 100 is better. Within 80 feet, you can possibly do it by having the portal on each side, which has a width quarter of a mile long, okay? And then you need 15 feet on each side for the shoe flies. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Former Mayor Yoriko Kishimoto, to be followed by our final speaker on this, Adina Levin.
Good morning, and I was the first chair of this committee many years ago, so glad to be back here. Lot of tough decisions. So I wanted to go back to the assumptions and even looking at the goals and criteria and I went back to the comp plan that Palo Alto has. And just to remind you, it says the city will strive to create a development pattern where people can walk, bike, take transit rather than than drive and will work collaboratively to find regional solutions to reduce occupancy vehicles. So in a way, rail is not an enemy, it is our friend and the challenge is how to how to really integrate rail and community. So citywide, so one criteria really should be with every solution, are you improving the walkability, bikeability and transit orientation of the entire city? I don't want to pit one one part of the city against another. I want Churchill to get better, but Embarcadero also should get much better. So I mean, the idea of putting another Oregon Expressway in North Palo Alto seems like a nonstarter to me. But I and I and the other thing is that that we want to differentiate between local serving rail, so that rail's there to support us, obviously, versus state. And so the state ones, obviously, would it would make sense to for them to consider the tunnels. But for for us, I mean, it really shouldn't be less, you know, how do we get this out of the way, but how do we how do we you know, really integrate the rail into into our system? So so the goal should really be how to integrate. I mean, what do we want Palo Alto to look like in 40 years? I mean, do we, how do we, I mean, the rail should be actually a really beautiful part of the city and how do we integrate it in?
Thank you very much. Last speaker, Dean Levin.
Good morning, I have three points. One is regarding the whole corridor. I was down at San Jose yesterday and there were representatives of the state rail plan giving a presentation at SPUR and a representative of Caltrain saying, you know, we are starting to really contemplate going above the 10 trains per direction per hour in the initial high speed rail agreement and that bolsters some of the point. There's discussion about potentially doing a regional mega measure and looking at that not only at the perspective of individual grade separations, but as grade separating the entire corridor, Nadia Nyak banding together with other cities up and down the corridor and the agencies and looking at that from a big picture could be really helpful. I would strongly encourage that, that's point one. Point two on freight, to think about pulling freight off the corridor here will also require consideration in Redwood City, where I don't know whether they're going to have freight 50 years from now, but right now, the port of Redwood City generates a non-trivial amount of the city's revenue. So saying, hey, we can either pull that off or replace it with trucks going through Redwood City neighborhoods would be a discussion that's going to be very salient in Redwood City. And similarly, in pulling, having diesel trains go on the Dunbarton, in the most recent discussion about Dunbarton Rail, there's been a lot of acceptance in the community of Menlo Park, haven't heard lots of opposition. But in the previous discussion and particularly when it came to freight, those tracks go behind people's backyards and if that discussion about Dunbarton included conversation about significant diesel freight traffic, that conversation would be different. So simply assuming, hey, we can get freight on Dunbarton and remove the impacts here, that will involve a conversation in Menlo Park and North Hur Oaks as well. And lastly, a short point in evaluating on the property takes in friends of Caltrain's social media, there was a lot of questions that, you know, if split alternatives are going to be decided, is there enough information that staff has in order to be able to estimate those property takes? There are estimates for some of the alternatives that have been studied more deeply with significant property take implications. That's also something that would be really relevant, how much can be reduced? And that was very salient in several other cities' decisions. In Burlingame, it was, in Menlo Park, it has been, and that would be a salient thing to have in some detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's bring it back to the committee for any final questions, comments, motions. I do think we should plan for a hard stop by 11 o'clock at the latest. It's already 10 o'clock and we do have one more item, so comments, questions. And we do have one more item. So comments, questions, motions. Greg.
So I guess what I heard us talk a little bit about was that we agree with staff's discussion in the white paper. So I was thinking that we should say something along the lines of that we agree with staff's analysis that the citywide options do not look promising. We want to hear from the public at the next roundtable and then have staff report back to us with a public input before making any decisions about what to do with that.
Sorry to interrupt, but can we put back up the slide on the timeline, the stuff that you had before?
And that we think the open trench options for West Meadow and Charleston are worth further consideration.
Hey, just the one where you had the specific upcoming dates for upcoming meetings, including the one on next week? That's the one. Thanks.
Because the next big thing is you have the 28th International Technical Staff Community Roundtable. I mean, my goal here is to focus the round, the community roundtable on the fact that the citywide options do not look promising and not to focus on things that are not going to make a difference, frankly. And to start focusing on what are the impacts of a southern trench? What does that look like? And to start focusing on solutions. Nope. Okay.
I don't know if we need, if we're crafting motions on this. Roughly what I would like to see us do today is I think we can accept this white paper and continue the process we're doing. And I'm still, there's two things I would still like to see. One is, as I think Nadia mentioned, kind of if we could open up some of these comments that we've had at these meetings previously from our TAC, et cetera, and again encapsulate where they are looking, where they're trying to punch holes in our assumptions and respond to those, I think would be helpful. And I think that will lead us to where you're trying to go, Councilmember Scharf, in terms of pulling some of these solutions or these alternatives off the table. I don't think we can accept this paper and say, "Well, it says we shouldn't do this one." I don't think our process really gives us that latitude right now.
Just to clarify, because I still might second your motion. I know it's still sitting out there without a second. You weren't saying we were going to take them off the table?
No, I did not. I just wanted to signal that it's time for people to get real and say, "What I said is that it doesn't look promising."
Right. When you're just acknowledging what's actually in the report, as the report says that. Okay, I will second your motion and I would be very interested in entertaining amendments to the points that Adrian was suggesting.
So let's see if the, let's see the motion written up.
Yeah.
Greg, do you want to speak to your motion again? And then the one thing I, I want to see and the one thing I may add is kind of surfacing, documenting, and responding to the comments across the lifecycle of this project.
See, clerk, are you able to, do you want me to repeat it?
I have roughly, the committee agrees with the staff analysis that the citywide options do not appear viable and that the open trench options for East Meadow and Charleston appear viable.
I actually didn't use the word viable. I used the word promising. I thought it was less... I actually said that we agree with staff's analysis that the citywide options do not look promising, but we want to hear from the public. That's actually what I said. That we think the open trench options for West Meadow and Charleston merit further study.
Would you be open to a change that submerged track options for South Palo Alto?
Yes, I think that's better, actually.
Right. So that would encompass either a tunnel or a trench?
Well, there is no tunnel option. It's only an open trench. That's all staff says is actually technically viable. So that's at least the way I read it. Am I wrong?
We did not look at a tunnel, but there would be similar constraints as there are with the trench. So, you know, potentially a tunnel in South Palo Alto could be something that we move forward for further analysis.
So let me just ask, why, if we could do a tunnel, why would you ever do a trench?
Ventilation and, you know, constructibility and operating costs.
But that's why it wasn't viable. That's why I was confused on that.
We'll have to, you know, compare. As we move forward, we'll start to look in more detail at the trade-offs, but there are trade-offs between the two.
I just might have a comment about the motion or it's almost more of like a suggestion of stating where the committee is right now. The first half of it makes complete sense, which is being very clear about sort of a conclusion about the citywide option, which says, "Doesn't look like it's possible or promising. We want to hear from the public." You're sort of signaling that. The second piece is still dealing within the context of a grade separation that is, say, below grade, trenching or tunneling. So that's including something as opposed to saying, "We don't know if we're going to exclude something." The one concern I might have is that that needs to be made explicit because there are other options that you're going to have to look at. So it would be confusing to the public, you know, to think that, you know, the other things are absent.
How about added among other options?
You know, yeah. I mean, I think the point is, is that, you know, you could end up saying, "Yeah, it doesn't speak to the North Palo Alto part. It doesn't speak to all their alternatives in South Palo Alto." And so I don't think the community, you don't want to overstate what you're saying.
I didn't intend it to limit, but to keep things open. So could we add something about?
How about among other options?
Among other options.
Does that, does that address your concern?
I just want to, I mean, this is really in response to the issue of trenching or tunneling is what you're focusing on. You have this concern about the citywide option, but that one is there. I think that helps in the context of trenching or tunneling.
So, okay, let's take some time. Let's have one person speak at a time. This is very challenging for, we normally, at council meetings when we track this, we normally have two people working from the state clerk's office. We have David Carnahan who's doing an excellent job. To have one person speak clearly and communicate with David about the motion.
Do we want to tell us what you have, David? I think that's probably the, because I can't see it up there.
Is it possible to stream it?
It's not possible for us to capture a motion in one document, show it to you while people continue to talk because we need to capture who is speaking and the incorporations of what's happening. So if you would like to restate where you guys think you are, I can capture that, show it to you, but then I can't capture the names of who's speaking at the same time.
So let's have one person speak at a time. Greg.
Okay. I guess I just want to know what you had so I can fix, so we can understand where the motion is.
So what I have roughly is that Mayor Scharf, or sorry, Councilmember Scharf moved, seconded by Councilwoman Walbach, to agree with the staff analysis regarding the citywide options that may be cost prohibitive and include this in the community meeting, open the trench options for West Meadow and Charleston. As open trenches appear promising and should be included in the community meeting, and then I need to incorporate in there submerged track options and that we are not trying to exclude options at this time.
Okay, so let me try again. So why don't we say, I'll just dictate it slowly, okay? That we agree with staff's analysis that the citywide options do not look promising. And we want to hear from the public. Oh, sorry, not "and," but we want to look, hear from the public. And then, yes, that we think the submerged options, among others, for Charleston and East Meadow merit further study. Was that, and did that, that caught staff's other concerns, right? Any other concerns by staff with that?
Did want to give Derek from Mott MacDonald an opportunity to comment if he wanted to raise any issues with the concept of a tunnel in South Palo Alto, since that was not one of the options that was evaluated. Dennis, anything you want to add? Again, this is Derek Penrice with Mott MacDonald.
Yeah, I wasn't directly involved with this study, but I did work with the city back in, I think it was 2010, 2011, when the issue of trenching and reviewing the High Speed Rail EIS at that point came up. So I am somewhat familiar with the issues in the city. I think the, you know, what you have in the white paper is at a concept feasibility level. You know, we can drill down on each option as it relates to construction methods. We can look at bored tunnels. We can look at cut and cover with the shorter options. I think at this point it's very soon to rule out any construction methodology. If you, if you look at the entire corridor through the city, you may find that you don't have one single option, that you have different options fit best in different parts of the city, just in terms of what the city's trying to achieve as a whole. In general, I was quite surprised and pleased by the level of comment that came from the members of the public. It's obvious that they are hugely interested and very involved in this process. I think in terms of the comments that have been aired today, I think the only one that I would take exception with is the comment that we deliberately inflated any of the costs. That is patently untrue and I would like that to be part of the record. You're as well comparing tunneling costs on the moon or anywhere else in the world. It doesn't matter. When you come to California, the costs are the costs. Comparisons with anywhere else in the world just aren't realistic.
Well, I would, but I want to keep us on schedule, so thank you.
If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to stay here and talk more.
Well, for now, I appreciate that. Thank you for being present and for your comments. And I want to bring it back to the motion. Would the clerk mind reading back the motion as made by Councilmember Scharf and clarified?
Councilmember Scharf moved, seconded by Councilwoman Walbach, that we agree with staff's analysis that citywide options do not look promising, but we want to hear from the public and that we think the submerged options, along with others, for Charleston and East Meadow warrant further study.
Sounds okay to me. And Adrian, do you have any suggestions or amendments?
Just, I think, need to be clear that it was, I mean, related to trench or tunneling or something. I mean, just think that the general public's not going to understand the concept of citywide options.
Okay, so let's...
For trenching and tunneling, let's just add those words.
Okay. So let's add that too. It would be, "Citywide options for trenching and tunneling do not appear promising," right? Adrian?
So as I mentioned earlier, I'm a little worried we're letting the cart get in front of the horse here. I think we really need to allow our white papers and our documentation and our responses to these technical issues and assumptions guide the conversation rather than have our motions guide the set of preferred alternatives. I don't think we're there yet. So as it's currently constituted, I won't support it. I do have an alternative motion. It's a little vague at the moment, but I'll try it.
Okay, I just want to clarify that what we're basically doing here is acknowledging staff's concerns and that opportunities are still available. And so that when there's the TAC meeting, the community roundtable, and when it comes back to rail, we have an understanding of what we've seen and what we've heard. Just acknowledging that without ruling anything.
I understand that we're acknowledging staff's concerns as put forth in this white paper. I think those are completely legitimate and it's good for us to do. I don't believe we're acknowledging the perpendicular questions that we were getting from the public and we've seen some of our emails about these underlying assumptions. I mean, just, you heard Adina go on about the freight thing for a moment, right? That is a huge thing we're talking about and we're just saying, "Oh, we'll shift with Dunbarton maybe," right? That's not appropriate.
Well, that's not what the motion does.
It's not what the motion does, but the motion is narrowing our options using this paper when I don't think we've done a good enough job documenting why things are being removed from consideration and that that's what our motion is doing.
Okay, I disagree with your interpretation of the motion. That's fine. You have an alternative motion or amendment that you'd like to propose.
So the alternative motion I'd like to make is accept this white paper and add it to our documentation and additionally direct staff to work with the public and TAC to respond to questions around the assumptions in this paper. So it's just giving us, you know, the process can keep on moving forward, but we're acknowledging that this is not complete and that there are a lot of assumptions in here that we've made or have not made. And I don't think we're going to get community buy-in until we begin documenting and responding to those.
Not seeing a second, the substitute motion fails. I would like to suggest a friendly amendment to the motion to incorporate Councilmember Fine's comments about working with the public. Could you repeat those?
So what I had written out is direct staff to work with the public and TAC to respond to questions around the assumptions in this report.
I'm fine with that. I actually take issue with your notion that the assumptions are wrong in here or not fully fleshed out. And I actually, my actually, I actually, my only real concern on this is that I want to make sure that staff has the discretion not to run down rabbit holes. That, I mean, if the assumption makes no difference to the outcome of that decision, I'm not sure it's worth spending a lot of time on. But I'm not going to put that in the motion, but I am concerned about that.
Right. I think, I don't think that needs to go in the motion. I think that, so let's add that language, right? That we direct staff to work with the TAC and the public to respond to concerns, including those about assumptions in this report.
I agree with you, Councilmember Scharf. I think staff does have the discretion to not go down rabbit holes. But there are enough big bullet items that I've got written down here. I'm not sure we're ready to do. I mean, things like 1% or 2% grade, four tracks, height, all these issues, aerials, I mean...
So let's stick to what we're actually putting in the motion. We obviously, there are a lot of open questions, but the motion isn't trying to address each of them. So again, the language that we're adding is to direct, I want to make sure I got this in a way that we can all agree, directing staff to respond to questions from the TAC and the public about assumptions related to this white paper.
Jim has a comment.
Can I just jump in? So I really appreciate the comment and I understand it. I do think that at the, in the March meeting, we need to be thinking about how we clarify what our engagement approach is going to be. That will need more definition than this particular directive we have right now.
I think we'll get to that in item two as well.
Okay, because I want to state that I'm not opposed at all. I understand the intention. It does potentially set the staff up for failure even in the interim when somebody says, "Well, I asked the staff these questions and they said it's rabbit holes and it's really not rabbit holes. It would be simple if the staff did X, Y, Z." I think we have to move to a different mode. And I don't think we have that discussion now. I think it is for March, which is what is a real partnership? What engaged stakeholders look like?
Can I interrupt?
Which is more than just identifying deficiencies in analyses. It's also proposing viable alternatives with specifics for consideration or else we will endlessly be responding to questions. We will endlessly. I mean, we're in the potential of having to do a new circulation study or congestion study. In the meantime, if people say, "Hey, your numbers are faulty," we're not going to do that in this timeframe. So I just want to qualify the fact that we don't want to sound like we're being difficult after we leave this meeting. Understand the intention, but it's ultimately designed to prepare us as best as possible also for the March meeting.
Is there other language you would prefer?
Actually, I have a suggestion. Instead of saying, "Respond," acknowledge. So we direct staff to acknowledge. So if somebody raises a concern, you say, "We acknowledge your concern. We can track this concern. We can compile it. We can make them available."
What I think Adrian is trying to get at, excuse, forgive me, is how do we focus and clarify some of the outstanding factors that will need to be part of you all making decisions in some way? And how do we mine a commentary from our community about those? And I think we could do that, even look, collecting that in the meantime, which is more preparing for how do you have your next discussion than it is for us to definitively respond to everybody in the meantime? Because I guarantee people will come in here and criticize what we're doing at the next meeting also.
For me, it's not about...
And I'm not being defensive about the staff. I just don't want to be unclear in this interim period between now and your next meeting.
It's not about the responses for me, actually. It's so much as it is about the document.
It's so much as it is about the documentation of these concerns and kind of how we're managing this project longitudinally. And I think that's really important as we're, especially now that we're getting into this narrowing down phase. I completely agree, we need to go from forty to four to eight to one, right? But we need the technical and, we, we need the documentation to kind of show why we've done that, and I'm a little worried that we have a bit, a few too many open concerns here that don't respond to that yet, and so we're using something that's a little bit incomplete to narrow down our discussions.
So again, would it capture your concerns and staff's concerns if we said, instead of direct staff to respond to, direct staff to acknowledge?
That's, that's not really the difference I'm looking for. The difference I'm looking for is kind of documentations of these concerns across the different alternatives and why staff did or did not include them, and, you know, responding to some of the broader community points.
So, again-
I think that's getting more and more-
I think this is an important issue. Just knee-jerk telling you right now, we would not have the capacity, in my view, to do that effectively between now and then. Now, I could be proven wrong, but I, I'm, I'm just trying to think of analogies. Even when we do specific minute-taking of the council meetings, which is very involved and is almost legalistic, still people will point out, "Well, I didn't quite say it that way. It needs to be done this way." So our ability to really capture this, I mean, this could be a big demand for us. So I, I understand the need to, how do we capture and report and be transparent and have, get everybody on the same page? I'm just looking at you guys. Who's going to do that?
So I have an idea. I think maybe we could start to organize all of the comments into a frequently asked questions, FAQ. They respond to not only the questions on the white paper and the circulation study, but then if there's any common themes in the database of, of public comments, and that could be a living document that we-
Let's try something else, then. Direct staff to identify and acknowledge salient and frequently asked questions.
Is that better?
Yeah, I, I just don't want us to be responsible for accounting for what all the different things that are said, and then, then we misinterpreted it, or we, you know, I think putting, doing our best job to try to capture within FAQs, the, the trending comments. Clearly, we will do that for the committee.
So, so that, that's helpful. I mean, just kidding, I'm thinking about the example you gave earlier, Jim, and I'm not trying to be difficult to your guys. Jim, you, you know, I brought up the tunneling and thing, and you said, "Oh, well, it's, you know, four billion dollars, that's $270 million a year on our current bond ratios." Like, those are the set of assumptions we need documented, and I don't think those are done here.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand your concern.
That's, I'm, I'm sorry, that's a concern. It's not a motion. I want to keep us on track. He's, he's stated his concerns, staff has heard them, he's not making an amendment. I don't think we need to entertain it further because there's no amendment. So, um, could staff read back what you have?
So to agree with staff's analysis, the citywide options for trenching and tunneling do not look promising, but we want to hear from the public, that we think the submerged options, among others, for the Charleston and East Meadow warrant further study, and direct staff to acknowledge and identify frequently asked questions and concerns raised in response, and either to this white paper or related to the rail corridor.
I wonder if we just left out the last part?
Just completely left it out.
Yeah, I mean, Adrian doesn't seem on board with it.
No, I'm, I'm not on board with the first part.
No, I thought you weren't on board with the second part either.
No, the second part is better, where we're talking about the salient FAQs and trying to respond to big things. That I'm on board with and documented.
If you leave the second part in, will you vote for the motion?
Probably not, because of the first part, actually. I think the first part is exactly the problem, is that we're saying, you know, "We think these ones are unlikely, but we'll keep on hearing from the public." I, I don't think we should be putting that in the motion at this time.
I kind of agree with you, actually, but-
I guess I'm still, I, I want to have a little more discussion on this, Corey. I know you want to get out of here, but-
All right, we have three minutes on this item. Go.
So, you keep saying, Adrian, I mean, what I'm getting from you, Adrian, is that you want to document the concerns so that the public can look back at this and say, I mean, that's what I'm getting, is that the public, when you look back and you say, "Yeah, it really does cost this much, and we've done this amount of work for it." And I, I guess my concern is that it seems blatantly obvious, and we only have so much time and so much effort to go forward with it, and I'm not sure we ever get further. So are there two or three items that you want, or, what, you keep saying they're big issues that are, what big issues are we talking about?
It's things like, so Nadia's brought up, you know, the Churchill trench. Are we going to do that, right? Are we, is a two percent grade possible? I know that Josh has said it's very difficult, but we actually don't know, and so can we, if we can document, hey, a two percent grade is absolutely impossible.
So the motion doesn't rule those out. Let's, let's stick with-
It begins to. The motion begins to.
No, but, but wait, let's go back. The, the motion, first of all, the motion, a two percent grade over the whole city, is that what you're thinking?
For, for, if we're doing a trench.
If we're doing a trench. So your concern is that if we did a two percent trench, that we could save a bunch of money?
No, my concern, sorry, my, my concern is that, for instance, staff is saying, "Well, two percent grade is, is impossible. We're not going to get that exception."
No, they're not. They're, they're saying that the two percent grade, that's what we're actually looking at in the southern trench.
Okay, in the southern trench. So if we extend it, but have, have we explored the extension under Churchill?
In the white paper, it says, oh, forget the Churchill thing for saying, but citywide, the two percent trench doesn't make it, two percent grade doesn't help us.
It's actually assumed to be possible, so it's baked into the analysis.
It's assumed to be possible, so we already have that in there. The Churchill trench, this is the first I heard of a trench, Churchill trench. I haven't heard the Churchill people talk about just a Churchill trench. I mean, I don't know how to deal with the Churchill trench issue on that.
It's still, look, it's a Churchill-
That's not off the table. It's not a citywide option.
Yeah, let's focus, guys, let's focus on this motion. We don't need to figure everything out tonight. We're not ruling anything out tonight. The motion on the table acknowledges and recognizes, the, the, I mean, Adrian, you raised earlier the issue of, you know, we don't want to get two, two down the rabbit holes and too much solving the problems tonight. The motion on the table does not attempt to solve the problems. It acknowledges staff's concerns, recognizes the salient points raised by staff, does not take anything off the table, and-
It doesn't rule out-
It doesn't rule out anything. One sec. And it also directs staff to do more to recognize salient points and frequently asked questions so that we can have that public input, and so that can help inform the discussions in the community roundtable coming up on the sixth, and the March 21st meeting, and other meetings, which we'll get into item two about when those will be held. So nothing is off the table yet. I actually had one last question, which was, although I'm not pushing for it, because there are a lot of problems with it, do we need to have something in this motion if people still want to discuss a viaduct or a berm at the community roundtable or at future meetings?
It's still on the table.
Okay, great. Seeing no other comments, let's move to a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against.
Okay, and so that passes two to one with Greg Sherriff and Corey Wolback in favor and Adrian Fine against. So, that's, that really, does that mean that goes to council now for, for process, or that just, that just directs staff for how you work with this committee?
I think it's too early to go to council. I don't think we're even close to going to council.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't-
Would not be required. We could simply communicate that to the community in the context of the roundtables.
Great, so it's been passed. Thank you. Okay, that concludes item number one. Well, now move on to item number two, and we're running short on time, so it's okay right now that any, any comments on this item before, after our discussion will be limited to two minutes. Staff first.
Thank you. We do not have a presentation. Simply wanted to pull up onto the screen, the attachment A on the staff report. This outlines all of the, the primary items. Clearly, there could be sub-items related to various points throughout the end of the calendar year. I would note, city manager noted that for the March agenda, that we could bring forward an, an item that specifically addresses the engagement approach and how that will relate with the rail committee. So with that, turn it back to your chair.
Do we have any public comments on this item? No? Okay, very good.
All right, I have some questions.
Yeah, Greg, you first.
So, how are we going to, I think what we need to work out is how we engage with council as well. I think that's what's missing. So, you know, where we, we need to have decisions that then go to council and then may feed back to the rail committee. My big concern on overarching issue is that it's just too tight, and we need more rail committee meetings. I mean, I'm-
I'm reluctant to agree, but I agree.
I mean, we do, and we need to, we need to basically, we should be shooting to be done with this by September, and, and been to council, have it done, and that way, I've never seen this stuff not slip. So you have to build in, if we finish by September, supposedly, we're probably finished by November, whereas if you put it up to November, we're past, and that's not okay.
I would note, there are probably two primary constraints on our ability to move more quickly on that. One is the engagement approach, and so, again, that would be a topic that one will, as staff, will be discussing later today, but also can bring back to the committee. The other is the consultant work that will be necessary in order to get to the actual evaluation of the four to eight, and, again, we're in a procurement process right now, an RFP process, so we will move as quickly as possible, but that is, I think, notable in terms of schedule.
Well, but I, I think we need to look at both the community engagement process and getting to that four to eight quicker.
I just want to point something out. On page three of this report says, "The community engagement approach," skip a little bit, yeah, basically, staff's going to redefine the community engagement approach after the consultant team is established, but the new consultant team won't be established till April, which basically, if I'm reading this correctly, we're not going to have a community engagement plan till May.
We actually already have a community engagement plan that we are implementing-
Sorry, an updated one.
Correct.
We're not going to have an updated community engagement plan until May.
Well, so maybe we misstated in that report. I think the, the sense of the role, the key role that the consultant will play in helping shape and inform a more widespread community engagement component is going to be dependent upon them coming in. So let's think of it as a tributor, tributary of another stream that joins us in April. We've got some others being deployed even right now, and you've talked in, you know, I mean, first of all, we have, I mean, peo, people in the know are fairly well-informed about what's going on and know how to engage. We have this issue of red teams or some of the kind of key stakeholders about how we more actively involve, I, I would just tell you right now, my plan is that personally, get very involved between now and April, or actually, now and, and March, when we come back to you with more specifics on where we go with some of the folks in that community, so we're better prepared to give you recommendations in March. So we're working on things now. We'll be, we'll be doing some work as staff. We're really looking at you, bringing back to you in March, discussion of a community engagement plan, but the staff report was acknowledging that a lot of our larger work that ultimately get to, how do we advance the four to eight suggestions and criteria, I mean, options with the public and to get the wider public engaged, that's what that, that was speaking to there, so.
So I think we're being a little, I think we're making a mistake on the community engagement process a little bit. I mean, I don't think the community can engage to really, till we have the four to eight. I mean-
Well, that's true.
And so, I mean, the, I think it's a different community engagement process once you have real scenarios in that four to eight, of which people can sit around and say, "Yeah, this is how it's going to affect my neighborhood, this is how it's going to affect me, this is what it's going to look like." And I, I think that we should move to that four to eight, and I would suggest that we move to that four to eight as quickly as possible, and, you know, the stakeholders who are mostly interested or already interested, they will engage on getting from the forty to the four to eight, but it's the real people who live in the neighborhoods, once we have the four to eight, that we have to really have a strong community engagement process.
So may I just respond to Greg? Under this schedule, this says under May one, it said, may first, the first thing is the grade separations, alternatives to be evaluated, recommend council approval. In other words, that says in May, the, the committee has to essentially select the four to eight alternatives. So that really just says, we just have March and April to do everything-
That's really helpful. I, I wasn't clear on that, and so then we're going to have a sep, could you guys come up with a separate thing that says, "We go to council on that"? You know, I think you're going to need possibly two council meetings for council to, I mean, think about all the time the rail committee's going to have gone through this and understand, there are council members that are going to be like, "These are the four to eight? Why are these the four to eight? No, I mean, really?" You know, and, so I do think we need to build that into a council schedule.
Yeah, and I would add that I think we need to be very thoughtful about how we work with the community and don't just dictate to the community, "Here are the four to eight." That, that, the, the community engagement over the next few months is critically important, right? As we are ruling things out, we need to be walking with the community. I know that's tricky. I know that's time-consuming. And I, I, I'm okay taking some leadership here and for us saying, as a city, doing expert analysis, you know, here's where we, we think we can't do X or Y, but I, I don't think we can, I want to make sure we're not just showing up in May and, and, and we're down to four to eight. I, I don't think that it's staff's intention to ignore the public between now and then. You know, we've got a meeting coming up, but I'm, I'm leaving up the question of, and soliciting thoughts from staff about how we do that and how we involve the community between now and where we get that reduced list.
Yeah, so we're saying we're going to have to come to you in March with more clarity, a plan, transparency about engagement, and that'll, that'll be one of the things you do. I do think that Greg's comment that you all were nodding at is right, which is, we have March and April coming up. We're going to need more rail meetings probably than we have planned, right, to make sure that we, that you're satisfied that we're doing this appropriately. This, this issue of getting to when you can, the committee can make a recommendation to the city council. We're not going to disappear now and show up in May with recommendations, so I, I think one of the things, whether it's we just work directly with the chair on scheduling, you know, the necessary meetings in March and April.
When it comes to scheduling additional meetings, are the other committee members okay with staff working with me and looping back with committee members for availability?
I would prefer that we start this at 8:30 if we could.
Okay, we'll consider that. Some of us have day jobs to get to.
I know.
I'm okay with you working with staff on, on increased cadence here.
Okay, great, so we will do that. One member of the public put in a card, Nadia Nyak, you have two minutes.
Thank you. So, yes, I agree with your concerns that we've got a tight schedule. I just want to reiterate, it would be most helpful if you continue to have more rail meetings instead of having them once a month. I don't really know what happens when we have new city council members who join a committee. This committee is very much like drinking from the fire hose, so I really empathize for Councilmember Wolback and Wookoo to have to sort of top, jump into this topic. I don't think you guys get tutorials when you come into a new topic, but I'll once again offer to meet with any city council members for more information. I'd also like to throw that back out to staff. We've talked since early last year about having more meetings with dedicated stakeholders. I hope I'm considered one of them. We haven't really had any one-on-one meetings about any of these issues. I'd be happy to sit down and help look at those forty-plus alternatives, and I just, I feel like it's my sort of civic duty to report to you guys. I, I think Card has always tried really hard to get the engaged community to work with the city so that it's not an us versus them, but sort of we're collectively, collectively trying to problem-solve. I think it's fair for me to say at this point that most of the community members that I've interacted with are feeling that this process is getting really sandbagged, and I don't think it's anybody's intent, but I think that they're just frustrated by the way the community meetings have gone because they're just too generic in their feeling, and then not everything has been presented in one big complete picture because it's just been the nature of this process. And so unfortunately, you've asked everybody a million times if they want a pony, they've all said yes emphatically despite that you told them that it was really expensive and ponies take a lot of care, but there's some things in this report which make it feel like you're telling them that ponies eat small childrens and breathe fire, right? And so they're not buying some of your assumptions, and so I think you really want to make sure that you're vetting these things. I really hear what Councilmember Fine is saying, you really want to be making sure you're documenting why you've made these assumptions, what you've used, and, and if the assumption changed, what would the orders of magnitude of difference be on those decisions? Because that is the key thing. Like, if we're arguing about two feet and it's not going to change the price, fair, but if you're talking about big things, that has a huge impact, and you, sorry to go a little bit over, but at the end of the day, you're probably going to need more money. And the only way you're going to get more money, this is the same conversation we've had with the high-speed rail, you have got to convince the community that you heard them and you thought of their alternatives before you ask them for more money. And if you're going to come to them and not look at an elevated and remove trench and tunnel, you're talking about taking people's homes on- tunnel, you're talking about taking people's homes on some kind of hybrid and asking them for money. You really better be able to justify that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And also, I want to point out on page three of the staff report for this item, that, quote, "A slate of public meetings, informal workshops, and one-on-one outreach will support the rail committee work plan." So, I want to emphasize how important that is, not just to the public, but to members of the council. I'm glad that staff acknowledged that in the report. I think all of those are important, so it's not just these meetings, but further public meetings, workshops, and that one-on-one outreach, which is acknowledged on page three of the staff report. Any motions on this one?
Just a few comments and questions here. So, one, I agree with Councilmember Scharf, it would be nice to just get a, it's kind of written out here, but when, we're circling back to council for broader approval, and it may even be helpful for the city manager to update council our next meeting about what that is, just so everybody is aware. Other thing I was wondering about here is, where, where are we going to have dependency points? Where will we be needing to go back to Caltrain, or, you know, to the freight operators? I was just wondering where that falls into the schedule.
We're planning to convene the technical advisory committee on an as-needed basis, so as we reach decision points where we need to get feedback from Caltrain or the freight operator, the freight operator's actually going to be very difficult to get answers out of, but, you know, Caltrain and our other agency partners, we have them on call to attend TAC meetings whenever we need them.
Okay. So, it's great we can call TAC as needed to address some of those issues for folks like the freight operators or others who may be less cooperative. I think it may be helpful for us if we schedule those decisions, and when we should start going to those people. If it is going to take us months to get some answer from the freight operators, we may want to think about scheduling that and figuring out how we ramp into it. In terms of the community engagement question that Councilmember Wolbach asked, I think we do have a plan, I think it's pretty robust, it's ongoing, it's working, it's not perfect, but we do have one, and it's been going on for a year, but we agree on last year. Thank you.
Okay, so I've heard a discussion about more, more meetings of this committee. I want to encourage what was discussed, but was, I didn't see it in the work plan of, of discussion at the next meeting about community engagement. Clarify when we go to council? And, yeah, do you need that in the motion?
I'd like them to update the schedule, and also see if they can move the end date a little earlier, and think about it, I mean, I don't want to...
And target an end date for this year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think...
And target November, September, or October, instead of December.
Right. Because you need to have some fluff in this, otherwise.
We can certainly take a shot at that. I think it will come into better focus, better clarity on our ability to deliver on that as we make progress on the consultant selection.
Okay, do you need a motion to move forward with the things we've discussed on this item?
I think, I think we're pretty clear on the next steps here, so I don't see a need for a motion unless others disagree.
Okay, we have two cards, these are the last cards we will take on this item, because we're about to conclude the meeting. Dean Levin to be followed by Nadia Niyak. Two minutes each.
Hi there. On the topic that just came up very, very briefly, on engaging with freight, and the difficulty of engaging with the freight operator, I wanted to report on one more thing that I heard at yesterday's panel discussion on implementing the state rail plan, and then in one-on-one conversation follow-up bolstering that, which is that one of the things that the state rail plan, you know, is achieving, you know, even now in its early stage, is having the leverage of the state in working with the freight operators, because historically, it's been exceedingly difficult for any one transit agency or any one jurisdiction to get the attention of a national, multi-billion dollar freight company, for which this is not their primary interest in the least. And one of the benefits in engaging on this grade separation topic, you know, as a corridor-wide level, which is called out in the state rail plan, and then getting the benefit of that statewide interest will be easy, you know, less difficult ability to reach Union Pacific and to address these issues, not as one little city of Palo Alto, or one little transit agency, you know, but from that big picture, which does matter to the freight operators and, and therefore is likely to be helpful. So, just wanted to put that context on the table, which staff may already be well aware of and working on, but just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you. And actually, for Nadia, did you want to speak on item two, or on the next steps?
On the next steps is fine.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Sorry.
Okay, do we need a motion on this one? Staff said no. Okay, so, inter-agency communications, none, moving on to next steps and future agendas. I wanted to give staff a chance to start.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we already covered it. This is a standing item on your agenda, so no further information from staff.
Okay, Nadia.
Okay, so I wanted to give you guys some very actionable items, hopefully. So, number one, if you could formally address, direct staff to make sure that the reports back from the local policymaker working group are actually on future agendas going forward. Second, I would also ask that all comment letters be in a packet or posted online. If, currently, if you go back and look at rail corridor meeting packets, or rail committee meeting packets, and click on them, you actually don't see all of the inbound emails that the council has received, or that members of the committee have received. There isn't really a good place to look at those. When we talk about trying to build the record of what has been sent in and what has been addressed, I think that's really important to reflect back to the community that, yes, we hear you, and here are all those documents, so if we could include those. They're typically in a city council packet, they haven't really been included always in the packets here. I would also encourage you to agendize future discussions about what political options are open to us, in terms of thinking about funding for all of these projects. We haven't formally talked about the city's lobbyist, we haven't talked about our role at local policymaker working group, we haven't talked about potentially reactivating the Peninsula Cities Consortium that Yoriko Kishimoto helped establish, so those would be some potential options to think about. And the fourth one would be very specifically to invite Chad Edison, who wrote the state rail plan, or is presenting the state rail plan, to come and talk to this committee about where's the role of grade separations in the Caltrain corridor fall in the state's priorities, to help you understand where those politically squishy things are going to be, because obviously, the issue of grade subfunding is of concern to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, thank you, everybody.